All right, good evening. This is the February 21st, 2024 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for the, for the public, before we move to roll call and the rest of the agenda, I am going to ask, I'm going to read a little statement real quick and then ask for a moment of silence. So as all of you are aware, our hearts are heavy with the loss that Burnsville sustained this past Sunday of two police officers and a firefighter, paramedic. Our thoughts and our deepest sympathies are with their families, friends, coworkers, and the community of Burnsville. This is a tragic loss that is being felt around the entire state of Minnesota and the nation and within our own public safety team. Please join me in a moment of silence to honor the fallen first responders. Thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda this evening is roll call. Would you please do the roll, Tammy?
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. The next item on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody who wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome. To do so, we did have a sign up sheet out in front and what, what I did want to share with the public is that, yes, during the, the planning commission was the actual public hearing, but as everybody may be aware, as the mayor, I always give the opportunity during our council times for the public to come up and speak. And so what I will do is everybody that's signed up on here, and I think they're all for the Mississippi Dunes Project, I will let them come up during our, after we've had our presentations and such, and you can share your information at that particular time. We will ask that you limit it to two minutes so that we can listen to everything and staff's going to take down notes at that time. So was there anybody else that was here for something that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the open forum and I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
So we have a motion, motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next on our agenda is a presentation this evening, and this is a really positive one and I think a little bit fitting if you think about what's been happening in our, in our state the last week or so. And that is the Public Safety Board, the Woolery Scholarship Donation, and I believe Ryan Pierre is going to... Sergeant McCormick, are the two of you, I didn't know if Pete was too. We'll kick this off and then while he's speaking, I'll ask our council to join me down in front, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I am Ryan Pierre, community engagement officer, new position for me this year. After Sergeant Dan Schoen was promoted, I took over this position as of January 1st of this year. Tonight, just wanted to come out and recognize the Public Safety Board and just kind of give a brief update on what they do. The Public Safety Board is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. The board is made up of citizens and volunteers from various backgrounds throughout our community. The board also consists of liaisons from the police department and fire EMS. And the Public Safety Board meets once per month and works together to promote the partnership between the citizens of Cottage Grove and the Public Safety Department in support of the safety community. Mission of the Public Safety Board is to provide financial support for equipment, training, and programs to enhance safety and to provide crime prevention and safety information to citizens, sorry. Some things that the Public Safety Board is involved with would be Strawberry Fest and parades that are around town, Night to Unite, Safety Camp, police and fire open houses, as well as community showcases. They're heavily involved with grant opportunities throughout the city, variety of fundraising, including hosting bongo events. They sell canine plushies or stuffed animals. With that being said, here's a photo of Gunner and Scout. Scout and Odin, our new canine, are going to be the next ones coming up. They're involved with cancer awareness and autism awareness patches, as well as challenge coins. Some ongoing support that they have done in the past and continue to do is fitness equipment, such as new equipment for the fire department in Cottage Grove, some portable speed signs, as well as a trailer. Large supporter of our canine program, including assisting in purchasing the dogs and equipment, firefighter particle hoods, as well as the Craig Woolery Scholarship. The Cottage Grove Public Safety Board is pleased to offer Craig Woolery scholarships to residents of the Cottage Grove pursuing post-secondary education in law enforcement, emergency medical services, or firefighting. The Cottage Grove Public Safety Board welcomes and supports diversity in the application and award process. Here's our scholarship application. And we encourage those who are eligible to complete the application, submit an essay and letter of recommendation. Those who are eligible for this include residents of the Cottage Grove who are pursuing post-secondary education in law enforcement, EMS, or firefighting. The deadline is May 1st of each year. More information can be found on our city webpage. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Justin Olson, along with the Cottage Grove Lions Club.
Thank you to our new community engagement officer, Ryan Pierre. Well done. And thank you Sergeant McCormick for giving him the confidence to stand there and do that. I really do appreciate that.
Tell him I wasn't going to hold his hand.
Close enough. You did, you did well. Yep, you did well. So first of all, thanks everybody who's here for tonight's presentation to the Public Safety Board here in Cottage Grove. We do this every year as we try to honor our friend and former colleague, you know, Public Safety Director Craig Woolery, and I know he is here with his lovely wife, Katie. I just want to spend a minute telling you about the scholarship. First and foremost, you know, this scholarship was founded by my wife, Kim, and I at Craig's retirement. And the reason we chose to start the scholarship, and we're so grateful to the Public Safety Board for managing this for us, is because we want to encourage young people from our community to take the step to become public servants and serve in the realm of public safety. And there's no better person to exemplify what that looks like than Craig Woolery in my eyes. And my wife, Kim, shares that sentiment, as does the rest of our family. For those of you who don't really know a lot about Craig, he's a very humble guy. So he doesn't like being here, standing up front every year, but he comes and I appreciate that. Thank you. Craig is, in my view, just a tremendous example of a leader in public safety, both in word and in deed. And I'll give you a couple examples of why I say that. When he became our Public Safety Director here in the city of Cottage Grove, and when I say that, you need to understand that we run a public safety department. Our department is all-inclusive, police, fire, EMS. So the Public Safety Director is responsible for all of those things. Craig's background is in law enforcement. In fact, he started as a medic and then he went into law enforcement. And when he became responsible for fire, he took the bold step as a leader of actually putting himself through firefighter training so that he could relate better to his subordinates and understand what they do each and every day. That is not a normal thing to do. But Craig, as the exemplary leader that he always has been, he took that step. And when I see behavior like that, I want to pay special recognition because that's the sort of individual that we're looking for to serve Cottage Grove Public Safety. Somebody like Craig, who worked his way up from being a medic to a dare officer to a captain. He was actually the captain on the police department who was our liaison for the Public Safety Health and Welfare Commission many years ago when I was a Public Safety Health and Welfare Commissioner for four years, and then ultimately graduated to become our Public Safety Director. You'll also note that Washington County Commissioner Carla Biggum's here. For those of you who don't know, there's nothing Carla has never done. And one of the things that she did was she was a Cottage Grove City Council member. She was part of the council that promoted Craig. She was also part of the council that fought tooth and nail to create our canine program, which we had a long time ago and we kind of let it go away. And Carla was instrumental in bringing that back. And so she worked very closely with Craig on a number of issues of that nature, including the Hero Center, et cetera. And so it's great that she can be here tonight to pay homage to Craig as well.
He was my dare officer, too.
And, and I know that a lot of people were very grateful that he was their dare officer. Most handsome guy in the police force. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. Some of his peers describe him as the guy who can go to SWAT training for three days and come back and he still has the crease in his pants. So yeah, that, that's definitely something to be known for, right? So I want to ask Craig to step forward, if he would, along with his wife, Katie. I want to ask the Public Safety Board to come forward. And I want to ask our Lions Club members to come forward because tonight's the night we get to say that the Craig Woolery Scholarship is going to receive funding in the amount of $3,500. Would you, would you mind holding that for me? Thank you. $3,500. Kim and I, when we started this scholarship, we made a commitment that we would donate $500 per year in perpetuity to the Craig Woolery Scholarship to again, help young people in our community fund their education as they pursue a career in either law enforcement, EMS, or in the fire service. We've been lucky over the years and, and life's been good to us. So we've been able to contribute a little bit more. And we're very grateful to our friends with the Cottage Grove Lions, and I'm, I'm happy to be part of that club, as is our current Public Safety Director Pete Kerner. They have now gotten behind this. And for the last two years, each year, the Cottage Grove Lions have donated $2,000 to this scholarship program. So that combined with my family's contribution, this year, $3,500. And we're very proud of that. So before, before we... Before we let Craig sit down, because that's what he really wants to do, I want to ask him if he has any words to share.
Councilmember Olson, the crime board and, and the Lions council, you guys...
Yeah, Public Safety Board.
That's right. You guys have done an amazing job. I was teasing Justin that I'm still here and they have a scholarship. But it's, it's great. We loved, always loved hiring our local young men and women from the community. They served the best. And they, not that others don't, but they really do well. And to provide some incentive, especially in today's times, is just more important than ever. It really has a lot of meaning. So thank you.
Julie, did you want to say anything? So this is Julie Rice, who is president of the Public Safety Board.
Thank you. Justin and Kim, we want to thank you for letting our board take over the money and help promote the scholarship. We have currently one person who went through the scholarship and is in skills training right now and interviewing to become a police officer. This year, we have two applicants and they're both female. And so we're encouraged that the females are starting to take notice that there are many, many opportunities out there for them and they're going to apply and become officers at some point. Maybe not officers, but in the law enforcement area. So we want to thank you. We would really like to thank the Lions Club for the generous donation as well. And we're working hard to make sure that this is put forth and we get good applicants for this position.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm not sure, our, our Lions tend to be a little shy. I'm not sure if anybody wants to speak on behalf of the Lions and maybe why our donations committee has decided to get behind this. I can see former President Rich Hoge here. Go ahead.
On behalf of the Cottage Grove Lions, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all. It's important for Cottage Grove Lions to give back to our community. That's our, that's what we strive at. We're about community, family, and having fun, right? And we do that best. And to be able to support this opportunity for young people in our community is something that we're excited about. We'll continue to do that year after year. We do that not only here, but we do it with our high school seniors every year in a big way as well. So we love to see this happening. Thank you.
And, and one last thing before we get everybody to squeeze together and take the picture, and I sure would like Commissioner Biggum to come up for that. Our Cottage Grove Lions Club met last night. And I want everybody who's here this evening or watching at home to know that our Lions Club also committed a $2,000 donation to our friends in Burnsville to help support the families of the fallen. And I know that it's important for our Lions Club to communicate that we are 100% behind supporting, whether it's Cottage Grove Public Safety, Burnsville Public Safety, whatever we need to do to ease their pain in some way, shape, or form. And we'll be delivering that check here in a couple weeks. You know, our, our Public Safety Director, Kerner, has already discussed with the Chief of Police down in, in Burnsville. And, you know, they're pretty overwhelmed right now. But in a couple weeks, when things settle down just a little, we'll head down there and we'll make sure that we get them that check. Okay? And I know that the Public Safety Board has also donated some funds. Is that right?
Because public safety, we are have a passion for public safety. That's why we're on this board. And we continue to do the things we do, do fundraising and everything else. But because this has hit so close to home for all of us, we as a board have decided to give each family $500 from the Safety Board. So...
So again, Craig, thanks for being here. Katie, thanks for coming along. If you didn't, he wouldn't come. So I know that. I do appreciate it. Commissioner Biggum, thanks for being here. You know, you left an indelible mark in your time as a city council member with both hiring Craig and then getting the canine program back. And to our Lions Club members, thank you so much for your support. It means a lot to me and my family personally because this is, this is our heart right here. We did this out of respect and love of our community and the fact that we want young people in our community to see how important it is to belong to the public safety team here in Cottage Grove. We've got a pretty special thing going on. I think everybody would agree. So with that, Jamie, if you want to take a couple of pics, we'll get everybody to squeeze together. Okay?
All right. You can hear the echo when the doors open.
Is your mic turned off?
No, it's just the doors were open. All right. So next on our agenda this evening is consent. Is, is there anything on consent that council would like to pull for questions or conversation? Councilmember Cambada?
I'd like to pull item D and item I.
D and I? Okay.
Part of D, I think.
Yep, yeah, Councilmember D. Sounds good. It's, all right. Anything else? All right. So what I'll do then is why don't we start with item D, which is commission chair appointments? And I guess we'll start, since you brought it up, Councilmember Cambada, why don't you kick it off and then we'll turn it over to Councilmember Thede.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to advocate for the appointment of Adam Larson as commission chair for Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Commission. He's been on the commission since 2017. He's been, you know, just a really integral part of, of the commission.
And then next, Councilmember Cambada, you wanted to mention about the Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant.
Yep. Again, I just wanted to advocate for the approval of this item. I know that our staff has been working hard to find grant dollars for the part of the Mississippi Dunes Park that the city currently owns. I know that the total cost of building out that park is going to take time and resources. And the more money we can get through grants, the better, and the quicker that project will progress along. So just wanted to highlight that. I know that there's a couple of other grant options coming up. So, you know, there's a lot of people vying for these grant programs. So I know that our staff is always vigilant whenever an opportunity presents itself. They try and jump on it as soon as possible. And I know there's a deadline on this one. So I think this one's important for us to get in front of.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you. All right. Seeing nothing else that was polled on consent, at this point, I guess we'll look for a motion and a second to approve consent.
Move consent.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, a second by Councilmember Cambada. Council, any questions or conversation? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine is public hearings, which we do not have any this evening. Ten is bid awards. We do have one bid award tonight, which is the South District Street and Utility Improvement Project Phase Two. And Amanda Meyer, who's our City Engineer, is going to walk us through this. So welcome, Amanda.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So the bid award before you, as mentioned, South District Street Utilities, Phase Two. So this really is, there's some minor utility work, so more of the surface storm sewer for the streets. And then building the streets, the landscaping, the lighting, the pedestrian facilities down on what we've been calling that Zivic 40, the realignment of Hadley and 100th Street. So we did recently open bids. Engineer's estimate was at 4.1 million, and you'll notice that low bid was at $3,358,746.45. So quite a bit under that engineer's estimate. Really happy to see these bids. And I think also that low bidder did do the first phase of this project, so they're very familiar with the site. They know kind of where things were left off, so I think that definitely helps get, excuse me, a lower price with these bids. So we have worked with Northern Lions. Again, they did do Phase One. So with that, there's a recommendation before you on the screen.
All right. Sounds good. Council, any questions on this topic? All right. Council, you have a recommendation before you. Whoever wants to take a motion and a second.
I would make, I would move to adopt Resolution 2024-032, awarding the South District Street and Utility Improvements Phase Two project to Northern Lions Contracting in the total amount of $3,358,746.45.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada and a second by Councilmember Olson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Amanda. All right. Now we're moving on to 11, which is the regular agenda. We have three items this evening. The first one is a site plan review and conditional use permit for Gerber Collision and Glass Facility at 7300 West Point Douglas Road South. And Riley Rooney, our associate planner, is going to walk us through this. So welcome, Riley.
Thank you. Make sure this is my height. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening is a conditional use permit and site plan review for Gerber Collision and Glass. So the proposed location for the site is at 7300 West Point Douglas, West Point Douglas Road South, sorry. It is adjacent to the current extra space storage as well as the Metro Transit Park and Ride Lot. So the site is currently undeveloped, and it was created during the extra space storage expansion in 2017. That lot is circled in red for your reference. So that is kind of what happened there. That was done essentially to create a developable parcel for future construction. So the applicant is proposing to construct a 16,940-square-foot automotive repair use major building. The construction of the single-story structure will be owned and operated by Gerber Collision and Glass, which offers auto body and auto glass repair services. This parcel is located within the planned business zoning district and is guided as comprehensive within the 2040 comprehensive plan. An automotive repair use major is permitted within this district with a conditional use permit. And just a little bit more background on the use itself, an automotive repair use major differs from an automotive repair use minor, like discount tire, because it does auto body work, whereas discount tire would just perform an oil change or windshield wiper repair. So site access is being proposed off of West Point Douglas Road South. That is highlighted in yellow on the screen before you. There are a total of 63 stalls proposed on-site. Of those stalls, 19 will be located at the front of the building. Those have been highlighted in blue. The remaining 44 stalls will be in the rear parking area, which has been highlighted in green on your screen. City code does require three stalls per auto bay plus one stall for each employee on-site. So with 14 interior auto bays and 13 employees on the larger shift, there would still be in excess of eight stalls on-site. In addition, there's going to be fencing around the rear parking area. This is being done partially to secure the vehicles being serviced by Gerber, but also to provide some screening for those cars being serviced. I would also like to note that the cars in the rear parking area are reserved for those being serviced by Gerber and for employee parking only, so that is going to be limited to staff access. There are two access points for that rear parking area on either side of the building. Those have been highlighted in red. The structure will be comprised of trucks materials mounted to a metal frame. The trash enclosure will be located at the southwest corner of the site that has been highlighted in orange on your screen. The materials will complement the principal structure, as they will be comprised of the same utility brick materials. And then the building meets all setbacks within the zoning district for the site. As for the architecture, city code does require 65% Class 1 or 2 materials, or, excuse me, Class 1 and 2 materials. The applicant has kind of gone above and beyond here. They're proposing 75% Class 1 materials. Those materials have been listed on the screen and include utility brick, synthetic stone, as well as glass windows. The applicant is also proposing two different Class 3 materials, architectural metal panels and EPIS. As for the landscaping, tree inventory was taken, although no tree mitigation is required on-site. The applicant is proposing 33 overstory trees, 31 coniferous trees, as well as 75 shrubs. I will also note that the applicant is proposing to maintain the existing vegetation at the rear of the property, which you can see here. With that, the recommendation is before you, and I thank you for your time. The applicant is also here and is willing to answer any questions you may have.
Fantastic. Well, first, I'll just see, is council have any questions for, yes, Councilmember Olson?
Not to put you on the spot, but first of all, thanks for a nice presentation. In reading through this in the packet, you could tell that there was a lot of really good quality planning that went into this. And the question that I have really revolves around waste that these sorts of facilities do tend to produce. Generally speaking, facilities of this nature, when they have waste streams, they have vendors that they work with who help mitigate those waste streams. You mentioned earlier kind of the difference between this use and, say, a discount tire. Discount tire is going to have a lot of old tires, and so they have a vendor who comes and picks up the old tires, whereas here, you're dealing with more chemical-related waste streams. What do we know about how the applicant is planning to deal with their waste streams or mitigate their waste streams, if anything? Have we had that conversation yet?
I'm actually going to defer to our applicant for that. He might know a little bit more about the ins and outs of that.
I would guess. I would guess. Yeah, he's smiling, so that tells me that he knows. Yeah. Come on down.
Welcome. And just state your name and address for the record.
Jason Duckovich with Charles Vincent George Architects on behalf of Gerber Collision and Glass. So actually, predominantly, the waste streams that come out of this particular use is more removal of, say, body parts, a bumper, a fender, things of that sort. Those are collected, and those are held off two to three times weekly. Your fluid wastes, say, your oils, your solvents, potentially other fluids, those tend to be stored in 55-gallon drums. They're actually minimal to our use. Most cars that will come, they've already been drained of those. They might have visited another service shop previously to receive those automotive repairs, engines, and things like that, the mechanical type items. This is strictly your body-type work.
How about high VOC, like paint?
So the paints that they use nowadays, they're all lower VOC. They're all waterborne versus your solvents-based, your oils. The one solvent-based product that is used is the clears that are put on the cars to maintain, you know, UV protection. Everything's ran through and contained in our spray booths. Those actually have a containment system to maintain a spill if that were to happen. You're not talking high volumes of fluids. Paints come in quart containers, so a small amount. Those are all filtered through several filtration systems as they're exhausted through, all VOC compliant and all meeting EPA regulations.
Fantastic. Good. That's really what I was hoping to hear, because I know that, especially when you think about a body shop, you know, you think about, there's paint that we deal with, there's fluids that we deal with, all the things that you mentioned, and ensuring that we kind of keep everything on-site and we don't have any escape, that we capture everything is really an important consideration. So it sounds like you guys have that pretty dialed in.
Absolutely.
Yeah, perfect. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And thanks again, Riley.
Yes, Councilmember Cambada.
This would be a question for Assistant Engineer here.
Yeah.
Regarding the staging, so with being a body shop, there, I'm sure at times will be vehicles that are inoperable. Is the parking arrangement suitable for accommodating, you know, large tow trucks or vehicles that would be bringing, you know, supplies and so on to the shop to turn around and stage without encroaching on the front of the road?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, so the circulation, if you might have seen on the site plan, you can come into the site, directly into the site and into the fenced area with a straight path. There's full circulation around the entirety of the building to provide that staging off-site and behind the public view.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? I guess I'll just ask the one. So pending approval tonight, what's kind of your plan for construction and opening? Do you have one yet or no?
So we're roughly, hopefully, two to three weeks out from submitting for permit of the final documents, you know, pending the comments that we've received thus far, and then hopefully starting construction sometime as soon as the weather breaks.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. All right. I think that's it. So council, if there's no other questions for either the applicant or Riley, I will look for somebody to take the motion before us.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2024-028, approving the site plan review and conditional use permit for a 16,940-square-foot major automotive repair used to be located at 7300 West Point Douglas Road South.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I can second that motion, please.
All right. Seconded by Councilmember Garza. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our regular meeting, and I get to update the number, which is pretty fantastic. I don't want to stale or thunder too much, but the sale of $16,025,000 in general obligations bond Series 2024A, and the previous number before this evening was $2 million more. And you're going to share, along with Stacy, it looks like in the back there, why the number came down so dramatically. And, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even say your name. I'm so excited about the other stuff. And our Finance Director, Brenda Malinowski, is going to take us, or at least start us through this. Thank you.
I will. Mayor, members of the council, the opening of the bids for the bond sale were held earlier this morning. And before, I have Stacy Kelving here from Ellers to give you the results of that bond sale, which were favorable. Just wanted to review with you and the public what we are issuing bonds for this year. We are issuing, this bond issuance includes funding for our utilities building, our 2024 pavement management, some of our street reconstruction overlay plan bonds, specifically for our 2024 construction on East Point Douglas, construction of Jamaica Avenue from 80th Street to 90th Street. And then lastly, three pieces of equipment, some equipment certificates. All those projects were included in our five-year capital improvement plan. We do that annually here at the city. We look at all our projects that are over $15,000, and we look at how we're going to fund those. And some of those are going to be funded with debt issuance, bond issuance, and that's what we're talking about this evening. And then specifically, too, this debt issuance was included in our 10-year financial management plan, because when we issue debt in the future, it's just like a mortgage on a home, we pay principal and interest on it. And so we want to see what the effects are in the future on that. And so that was included in our 10-year financial management plan at those preliminary numbers. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Nice to see you all. Stacy Kelving with Ellers &amp; Associates, your municipal advisor. As you know, with each bond issue that we have, we have to have that rated. And so you are rated by standard and pores. So a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Malinowski and Ms. Lovett participated in that rating call with S&amp;P, and we're happy to say, as you know, they affirmed your AAA rating with a stable outlook, which is great. So today, we did have that sale this morning at 10 o'clock, and we received 12 bids, which is great. Yes, a lot of bidders. And I would say, you know, there's, you know, three, you know, things for that. So one, it's the size, the power amount of $16 million, or originally $18 million, is pretty significant. Second, it's the strong credit quality of you at a AAA. And I'd say, finally, there's, you know, not a lot out in the market right now. So one of the things that we do as staff, as we're looking at your funding needs and talking about issuing debt, we look at timing. So reality is, the funds will be here March 14th or 12th, and essentially, the funding probably wasn't needed as early as that, but we knew that it wouldn't be as much in the market, so it's a good time, right? So we always want to go on, when's a good time, when we can get the best bids? And the second thing that we're seeing right now is still non-BQ debt, which this is, is anything over $10 million, is really still outperforming a little bit BQ debt. And so we want to hit while that was still hot in the market, because we know that that's going to change over time. So as the mayor had noted earlier, the power amount of the bonds was reduced by $2 million because we received a premium bid. And so tonight, you'd be awarding the sale of the bonds to Bofa out of New York as the lowest responsible bidder. So I'm happy to stand for any questions.
It's just fantastic. I just have to say, when Brenda and Jennifer mentioned earlier that, oh, you have to change the number by $2 million savings, in essence, to our citizens, that's absolutely phenomenal. So, yes, Councilmember Olson, you have something you want to add?
Briefly. Stacy, thanks for being here. Especially, nice to see you with good news in your pocket. So glad that you were able to come. You know, I just want to say thank you to you and all of the help that you and your team provided our team a year and a half, two years ago, as we started down this path of creating our 10-year financial plan. That was such a critical element in our city becoming a AAA-stable-rated city. And correct me if I'm wrong, can't go any higher than that, right? That's as good as it gets. You know, we worked very hard as a council and as a staff for years and years and years to improve our credit rating so that we could enjoy benefits like this. And 12 bids? I don't think I've ever seen 12 bids in my time as a city council member. I've seen eight or nine, I think, at the top end. So 12 bids means that the public likes our paper, the financial institutions are watching us, and a reaffirmation of that AAA rating, again, that's compliments to you and to our staff for working so well together to provide us with that really important financial guidance that we need to stay on track and make sure that our residents are receiving... So as the mayor had noted earlier, the power amount of the bonds was reduced by $2 million because we received a premium bid. And so tonight you'd be awarding the sale of the bonds to Bofa out of New York as the lowest responsible bidder. So I'm happy to stand for any questions.
It's just fantastic. I just have to say when Brenda and Jennifer mentioned earlier that, oh, you have to change the number by $2 million savings in essence to our citizens. That's absolutely phenomenal. So yes, Councilmember Wilson, you have something you want to add?
Briefly, Stacy, thanks for being here, especially nice to see you with good news in your pocket. So glad that you were able to come. You know, I just want to say thank you to you and all of the help that you and your team provided our team a year and a half, two years ago, as we started down this path of creating our 10 year financial plan. That was such a critical element in our city becoming a AAA stable rated city. And correct me if I'm wrong, can't go any higher than that, right? That's as good as it gets. You know, we worked very hard as a council and as a staff for years and years and years to improve our credit rating so that we could enjoy benefits like this. And 12 bids, I don't think I've ever seen 12 bids in my time as a city council member. I've seen eight or nine, I think, at the top end. So 12 bids means that the public likes our paper. The financial institutions are watching us. And a reaffirmation of that AAA rating, again, that's compliments to you and to our staff for working so well together to provide us with that really important financial guidance that we need to stay on track and make sure that our residents are receiving the very best services they can receive for the lowest cost possible. I just wanted to appreciate the fact that you both worked so hard on that. And this reaffirmation is just evidence that that work was very important and definitely well worth it. Thanks.
All right, any other comments by any councilmembers? All right, thank you. Thank you, Stacy, for sharing that great news and Brenda, same thing. Very, very nice job. So we have a motion before us on the screen with the updated number. So who would like to take that motion?
I can, I will like to make a motion to adapt the resolution of 2024-029 approving the preliminary plat and planned unit development.
Nope, it's actually the bond sale, bond sale.
Sorry, there we go. Adapt, I would like to adopt the resolution for 2024-27 providing for the issuance and sale of the 16 million 25,000 general obligation bond series 2024A.
Do you want to read the rest of it on the screen?
Pledging for the security thereof, special assessments and net revenues and levying a tax for the payment thereof.
Thank you, it's just to just to be official. Thank you, Councilmember Garza, do I have a second?
And I will second that.
All right, Councilmember Kamada made the second. So any other comments, council? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we are now to item C under the regular agenda, which is the preliminary plat and planned unit development of Mississippi landings, landing, excuse me. And Emily Schmitz, our Community Development Director, is going to walk us through this one.
Mayor, council, good evening. I have to tell you, a wise person once told me, always try and tell the story when you're up here. And I have to tell you that this evening is no exception. This has been three years' worth of public outreach, planning, evaluating, a lot of effort going into this particular site. And so I'm really going to take some time this evening at the beginning of the presentation to really give an overview and a little bit of a deep dive into that background and the history of this particular site because it's very important to the application before you this evening. So I'm going to start all the way back in 1973. This particular site, most of us know it as a golf course, but back in 1973, it was in fact a tilled field. And all the way up until about the mid 90s, when that particular property owner at the time decided to mass site grade, north to south, east to west, the entirety of the site graded into a golf course. That golf course operated then from the 1990s till around 2017 when it did in fact close. The site has had vacant since that time. And the current property owner purchased that property in 2019. Not only is it important to look at the history of the physical part of the site, but also the land use of this particular site. We go all the way back to the 2030 comprehensive plan update. This was 2011. At the time, the golf course was actually open space in the land use. And we said, golly, there's always an opportunity for a golf course to potentially redevelop. And so in 2011, we says, let's differentiate the golf course from the adjacent S and A or the open space. And we said, we're going to guide it as golf course. From that time forward, we we heard a lot of creative ideas. Festival, campground, all all sorts of unique opportunities for potential redevelopment. So when the 2040 comprehensive plan amendment came up in 2017, we said, golly, we have to really think a little bit harder about this. And so we guided this particular parcel as transition area planning, which is a unique opportunity to try to really get it right. It requires some additional planning efforts. Typically, and specifically in this instance, a master planning effort. And so that's an entirely additional planning process as we evaluate the best potential redevelopment or long term use of a particular site. So in 2020, we did just that. We started those efforts. We started at the end of 2020 and at the beginning of 2021, we had chosen a consultant, ISG, to help us work through the design of a potential master plan. Again, there's kind of two parts of the master plan. I'll get into the details of that on the next slide. But I really wanted to focus on this slide of the work, as you can see, going all the way from 2020 to 2022 almost, that process takes. So we started having our consultant create, I'm going to call it our first iteration of the master plan. Council reviewed it, made some tweaks. We then focused hard on getting the word out to the public, open house. We had some online opportunities to provide comment, engaging the residents and all of the folks to take a look at that, come to us and have those conversations about what that looked like. So we worked through that process. Not only did it come before council, but it also came before our Parks, Recreation and Natural Resources Commission, as well as the Planning Commission. It finally came back to the city council after several tweaks for their final approval in December of 2021. As I mentioned, there's two components to the master plan, the park portion and then the land use. So I'll speak just briefly on the land use portion as we look at that. We have to look at kind of any surrounding impacts or or effects that might determine how that land use would be appropriate. So in this particular instance, of course, we look at the train tracks. We look at the realignment of the road, which again, I'll get into the details. And so we recognize that perhaps there needed to be a little bit of a buffer, right? And so maybe a little bit of a higher density adjacent to those train tracks and then the lower density throughout the remainder of the site. Now, I will say, the biggest focus of this master planning effort was the park master planning efforts, which really triggered these efforts to start as soon as they did. The council's vision has always been to provide that public access to the Mississippi River for all abilities. And this was the start to just that. So the council really focused on ensuring that there was enough acreage adjacent to the Mississippi River to support the vision that they had for those park and recreation opportunities here in Cottage Grove. So once we completed that master planning effort, we had to bring the comprehensive plan land use up 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 to stuff with that master plan. And so as you can see, we updated from that transition area planning to the small portion of medium density, as I had indicated, adjacent to those railroad tracks, with the remainder being low density. But most importantly, we solidified those acres adjacent to the Mississippi River to be preserved as park and open space. As you recall, we then had a proposal before us for a potential development. Because that development proposed over 250 units, they did trigger the requirement to complete an EAW process. So that process started and navigated through publishing in the EQB. And ultimately, a notice of decision was determined by the council in December of 2022. That was a negative declaration. No additional environmental review was needed as a part of that proposal. As a part of the EAW, it identified a couple of different studies that really should be done before we approved any work to be done on the site. I've listed listed those here. But the applicant will be before you later on in this presentation to speak more specifically to those assessments and surveys that were completed. So I've given you the story. I've told the story, I've told the background. I can I can now move into the actual application or the proposal that's before you this evening. Rachel Development is the applicant. This is their preliminary plat proposing 377 single family units. They're providing a vast array of lot sizes, starting with 40 foot wide lots, kind of on the northern end. Again, adjacent to the train tracks, I'm not going to write here because it squeak on me. But those 40 foot lots are very similar to the Capstone development that you see up on top of the hill. Detached townhome is what kind of what we reference. And then 52 and a half foot wide lots, sort of in the middle of the development. We see those in our Hinton Woods development, kind of on the north side of town. And then they are working with two custom home builders for 65 foot wide lots on the south end of this proposed development. It's important that we recognize the developer's dedication to provide a variety of housing opportunities within this development. I know that was an important part of the council strategic plan to continue to provide diverse housing opportunities within the community. And this does just that. So this density is averaged throughout the site. They're proposing the 2.47 units per acre, which is right in line, actually with that low density, which is between two and four. So they're right in line. This project is proposing a PUD. And I think you've heard all of us planning staff up here spouting out about a PUD. But I have to remind you, a PUD is a planning tool that allows us to provide some flexibility. This is the perfect instance. It allows us to take a look at our standards and recognize, are those standards limiting the ability to maybe provide more of a cluster development, to provide some additional open space, green space, buffering, things of that nature? So by providing perhaps smaller lot sizes, reduce landscaping, that's allowing us to put that development a little bit more, sometimes maybe centralized in the site to allow for those additional protected or preserved portions of a development. This particular site is of course within the Merka, which is an overlay district within our zoning code. So it kind of sits over top of our underlying zoning districts. This particular site is within, excuse me, two of the Merka districts. The first I'll mention is the RN district. And I wanted to focus on the fact that 20% of any area within those districts is required to be preserved as open space. In this particular instance, about 46 acres are proposed to be preserved, which is above and beyond the 11.75, which is the 20%. The RN district is typically directly adjacent to the river. This district is characterized in our code, of course, as wanting to preserve open space and preserve those views to the river. The second district is the SR district. As you can see, it's set back just a bit further from the Mississippi River. So those views, obviously less impacted. But of course, the Merka wants us to focus on ensuring that we're managing that stormwater within that district, and I'll talk a little bit more in detail there. This district requires 10% of the area to be preserved. As you can see, that's 10.58 acres. This particular development is proposing to preserve 64 acres. So I will say total preservation proposed as a part of this project is around 110 acres. So as you're all obviously aware, the Pulte project did not follow through. However, the city's passion and dedication to secure those acres adjacent to the river continued throughout 2022. And in about mid 2023, the city did purchase 19.91 acres with our county funding partners. So we were able to secure that land and close on that, which was definitely exciting day. A lot of work went into that collaboration. In addition, we worked with the property owner who, ahead of development, worked with the city to actually deed 9.6 acres to the city so that we would actually have access to this 19.9 acres that we had just purchased. So they, of course, so the property owner did that to us ahead of a development with an understanding that that would go towards our required park dedication. Then additional four acres are being dedicated as a part of the project before you this evening. And finally, on this page, I wanted to mention, the property owner continues to work with the DNR on two particular parcels on this site, 12.4 acres in the south, oh my goodness, southeast corner of the site, as well as what we all know as the driving range above the tracks, Outlet A on the screen before you, 35 acres. So it's my understanding that DNR is working to close yet this year on those two properties. With all of our wonderful development projects, we do require a tree inventory be completed. This particular development is proposing to remove about half of the qualifying inches, which also means they're proposing to preserve half of those qualifying inches on such a large site. Recognizing that some of that mitigation is going to be required, the developer continues to work to find places to plant additional trees in outlots. But specifically, I wanted to note their their work to preserve the buffered trees adjacent to potentially some of those existing residential lots in this particular area. So focusing those preservation efforts where they would provide the biggest impact as a part of developing this site. Access to the site is proposed off of 103rd Street. As a part of the Washington County, they completed their Southwest arterial study, which identified the best improvements from Highway 61 all the way to their potential future regional park on Gray Cloud Island. They identified realignment of 103rd Street, as you can see on the screen before you. Instead of a T at 103rd and Gray Cloud Island, it's a curve. And so as a part of this project, that realignment will be completed. So this project not only dedicates that right of way for future expansion, but also starts that realignment process as a part of the county's plan. Water was extended from the Settlers Bluff Development at the top of the hill, somewhere in here. And so this development will pull that water main down the hill and connect to this development. Sanitary sewer, for those of you who are familiar, this particular site sits just a little bit lower. So a lift station is required to pump up into the city's sanitary sewer system. And finally, stormwater. I always kind of make a joke, you know, my engineer friends get a little bit worried when a planner talks about stormwater. But I did practice this and it's very important. We look at volume, rate control and water quality as we look at our stormwater standards. When we look at a site as it sits today, the water is kind of willingly, goes wherever it wants, right? So as we enforce our stormwater standards, we create these basins and and storm sewer systems that move the water where we need it to move. But what's most important is these basins filter that water. It collects the sand, the salt, all the other things that are coming off of this development as it discharges out of the city's stormwater system. This image is perfect. It outlines all of those ponds that are being proposed on the site to do just that. Grab that water, take all of the sand, the junk out of the, before it discharges off. So I wanted to, hopefully, from a planner's perspective, that made sense. And finally, the home styles. I mentioned this earlier in the presentation, but this developer is proposing to work with three different builders, M&amp;I Homes, Capstone Homes, and then of course a custom builder on those larger lots closer to the river. And so with that, I'm going to close my presentation here. But I'm going to turn it over to the developer who's going to give some more details into the development, as well as, as I mentioned, some of those environmental work that has been done.
Thank you, Emily.
Good evening. Paul Robinson, I, Mayor and councilmembers, I am the Development Director for Rachel Development. It's been a little while since I've been before you. It was in September that we kind of started the more formal journey. We actually put this property under contract in March. So we were, have been working on it for a year, which is a small part of the three year journey that you've been on on this particular property.
Can I, can I get you real quick though to state your address for your business?
4180 Napier Court Northeast, St. Michael.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, so I'm going to go through a presentation that's similar to the one I gave at the Planet Commission. I'm going to add a couple of slides, take a couple of slides, touch on the environmental portion of the of our presentation that we made at the Planet Commission, but not go into that in great detail. So again, I'm going to, and I'll probably double up on a few of the things Emily said, but just to reiterate, the overall site that David Gustafson, you know, purchased was 200 acres. Of that 200 acres, 47 and a half acres are under contract with the DNR or under option agreement with the DNR to close. The the city, as you just heard, you know, purchased that 19.7 acres. David Gustafson dedicated 9.6 for park dedication. And so that is all in the public, potentially to go into the public domain. The development area left, that's what our preliminary plat includes today, is that 123.7 acres. today, is that 123.7 acres. So that's what we're developing. Of that, we're dedicating four acres to park, so leaving about 119 left. In, of that 119, there's almost 30 acres, like 29 acres is going to be open space within the development itself. So if you look at the public land along the river, there's, between the DNR, that city granted land and the city park, is 45.7 acres, and all of the shoreline, 2,775 feet. So, you know, I look at, that is a fairly substantial amount of park dedication. Overall, you heard the number, 110 acres, that's the DNR land, the city park land, and the open space within the development. So 54%. So definitely a half-full proposition. So I'm going to go through and just look, this is, we started with a preliminary plat, but we also looked back at the property as it stood and understood the topography and the drainage. And I'm just going to kind of run through kind of those basics. So, you know, we look at the site. So you see the lowest areas of the site. Of course, it drains down to the river, both in the north end, on the south end. Starts to come up from those low elevations into the center of the site, where you find the highest elevations in this plateau in the middle of the site where the majority of the development is taking place. If you look at the natural drainage patterns, I actually made a mistake when I was meeting with you in September. I had an arrow pointing the opposite direction. But actually, a vast majority of this site actually drains to the north. And that, it comes off of that northern portion, and then the kind of upper plat, the middle plateau down into that kind of a wetland drainage area as it drains north. And then all of the property along the river then drains down to the river. So if I look at the existing watersheds, all of that green area today drains to the north. All of this blue area and red area drains down into the river. A wetland delineation was completed. There are six acres of wetlands on the site. If you look at also, including the almost five acres of wetland buffers, that we almost, there's not quite double, but the areas, there's a significant amount of buffer around these wetlands that are being restored with native, you know, prairie. But that's something that we have to take into account when we're designing the property. And then we did a substantial amount of soil analysis on this property with Braun InterTech. They are a geotechnical consultant. They provided basically a 140-page geotechnical study to the city on this property, basically, you know, indicating that the soils are suitable for housing on this property. We also, I just added a couple slides because we did, we're not going to go through the whole environmental part, but we also took into consideration that Rusty Patch Bumblebee Habitat assessment that was completed that showed the majority of areas on the site were, had low suitability for Rusty Patch Bumblebee. There was an area that did have potential suitability based on that study, and that is that area that is being acquired by the DNR in that location. We also completed a rare plant and native plant community assessment on the site. These are the native plant community areas that were identified on the site. And then within those, there were rare plants identified, which is also, which was the highest quality, you know, native plant community with the rare species. And it's, that is also part of that 12 acres that's being purchased by the DNR and then added into the SNA. So you just, we look at all of that as we're laying out the site and considering how we're moving forward with our preliminary plat. So back in September, I came with some goals and objectives that are still the same. So we're, our goal is to create a high-quality neighborhood in the city of Cottage Grove, one that keeps the open spaces, and this is really referring to that preliminary plat we started with, that kept those open spaces and wetlands that were shown in that preliminary plat and actually built on them. I think we actually added more open space. We kept the trail connections within those and actually added more trail connections that weren't there. We kept the whole neighborhood connected through these trails and sidewalks to the river and the open spaces. And we're providing a variety of homes at a variety of price points, and I'll talk about that a bit more in a minute. And then lastly, we are coming forward to you with the project we felt was financially viable. And we're, that one that we're looking forward to getting in the ground this year. So as Emily mentioned, we have three different neighborhoods. We have this orange area, which is the 40-foot detached townhomes, the 52-and-1/2-foot lots, this yellow area in the middle, and then finally, the 65-foot lots along the river, which make up what I'm calling the river neighborhood. If you think back, I was just going to show kind of the overall, you know, flying high. Here's the previous preliminary plat that was, that you approved for PULTY. And we really were looking at just amending that plat. And if you look at the two, you know, kind of flying over it, you can see the, in red now, the area previously that was being graded and is a part of that development. And you look at what we're grading as a part of our development today, we really haven't come forward with something that's radically different. We made adjustments in it. I think we've made it better, but we basically stayed within the same footprint. We have 372 units for PULTY, 377 for us, so five more units. But basically, you know, when you consider the totality of it, that's not very much. And then the EAW that was done at the time, allocated, or identified this site as having up to 499 units. So we're still 122 units below what was the threshold that was studied in the EAW. If we look at this in a little bit more detail, the previous PULTY plan had some twin homes, had a condo, and then had their smaller 50-foot lots along the eastern side, about 163 lots. If you look at our eastern side, we have about 183 lots, but we're using a detached townhome product that is what, that capstone product coming down from Settlers Bluff. The previous plan in the middle had these 60s and a little bit larger than 60-foot lots that made up the vast majority of the middle and western portion of their site. We have a smaller area, but it's made up of 52-and-1/2-foot single-family lots. And then finally, we have the 65 lots, 65-foot lots along the river. Again, the total, 372, 377. This seemed like a good slide to just highlight kind of what Emily was talking about with stormwater. Not going to go into the total suspended solids and all of the details. But the previous plan had most of the stormwater around the outside. What we've done with our plan is take, keep some of that around the outside, but bring some of it to the inside to try to create some more amenity and open space within the neighborhood so it's not just one solid block of housing. So just to look at the two areas that changed the most. So we had that 60 units that made up the twin homes and the condo up in the north side of the project, which is today 23 detached townhomes. And then if you look at the river neighborhood area, which was where the bigger changes happened, previously, there were the 60- and 50-foot size lots. That's now 65-foot lots. We took that ponding area that was in front of the lots, the riverside. We moved it to the back. We created a whole treatment system through that area with some landscaping buffer to create a really nice amenity for that neighborhood along the river. So again, I'm going to go through the products in these three different neighborhoods. The 40-foot ones, it's Capstone Homes, coming down from Settlers Bluff, looking to start in that low to mid 400s. This is a picture of their streetscape up at Settlers Bluff. MI Homes is coming into the 52-and-1/2-foot lots with two products. They have a two-story, single-family Smart Series products, what I'll say just maybe a step up from Capstone's product, and then a single-level living villa product, so more of an empty nester, single-level living product. And then the, so here's examples of their 52-and-1/2-foot Smart Series. They start in the mid 400s to low 500s. Here's an example of that streetscape. The, here's the, the single-level living villa product. That starts in the high 400s, goes to the low, or starts in the high 400s, goes to the low 500s. And here's an example of that streetscape. And then finally, the 65-foot river neighborhood, which is that move-up single-family. I call, it's going to be similar to Eastbrook. It's going to be those homes starting in the mid to high 700s. And I know Councilmember Kamada had asked me very distinctly if we'd have buyers for this. And, you know, we have two, we had a number. I would say we had far more than two that were wanting to be a part of this neighborhood. And we landed with Hanson Builders and Michael Lee Homes, both, I think, have a pretty good understanding of this area and this market. And so I think that rounds out what I would say is kind of a single-family version of lifecycle housing. So you can kind of entry level and have your parents living in the same neighborhood. And we've had other neighborhoods that that very thing has happened. We're going to be amenatizing the entrances as you come into the site. There'll be, if you look at all the trails and sidewalks, there'll be over three miles of trails and sidewalks within the property linking to over a mile of trail in the public park. As with, as we've talked about, there's a lot of flexibilities with these, with this particular PUD, but it's very similar to the flexibilities that were in the PUD that you approved for PULTY and the PUD that you approved for Settlers Bluff, since we're incorporating that product into this neighborhood. And then finally, I was going to touch on the environmental portion of the, kind of the environmental questions that have been coming up. Melissa Barrett is with me from Chellog this evening, and she can answer any questions you have. But if you, I think I've been told, some of you watched that presentation. It was 15 to 20 minutes, very detailed. And to, for the sake of time, we're not going to go through that 20-minute presentation this evening. But I am just going to touch on the various components of that presentation. So one was the Natural Heritage Review, or that NHIS letter that we received from the DNR, which recognized the work that had been completed since the last letter was submitted. And basically, when it came to the rare bird species that were within a mile of our site, we have to ensure that we remove no trees between April 1st and August 15th. So we will be, you know, that will be something that we will get on right away as if this were to pass tonight. The rare plant survey was, and native plant community survey was completed. That followed the DNR-approved protocol. The DNR basically approved that protocol. There were no rare plants within this project area, and there was no take permit required for our project. There was a large area of this 1980, that was identified in 1987 as Dry Barrens Prairie. That was, once the survey was done, that was recognized that that, that area has gone. It was not, there's, with the golf course development, that area no longer exists in the site. And then the rare plants that were found are in that DNR property that I just highlighted here in yellow. And that was found, you know, again, that is in the property that's to be purchased by the DNR. A Rusty Patch Bumblebee assessment was provided, and coordination with Fish and Wildlife was completed. That served, that was provided to the Fish and Wildlife. They determined that it was not, there was not likely to be adverse effect to the species, which is basically what they consider a negative determination. In all of the open spaces that you see, and I had a slide at the Planning Commission, but all of the open spaces within this development are going to be planted with native species and using state DNR or Bowser seed mixes. And then finally, there's a lot of questions about the, you know, there's, this area has a wealth of cultural resources and artifacts and burial mounds in different locations. And so to that end, Phase One, Archaeology, Archaeological Phase One was completed on this site and found that no archaeological resources were identified. As a part of that, and one was also an inadvertent discovery plan. So if, in case something were to be found, work would stop, and then tribes would be notified, and there would be, we would decide what to do at that point and follow the contingency plan. So with that, appreciate the time you gave me to give that presentation. And if you have any questions, I could answer them now or after public comments.
Okay. Councilors, any questions you want, either for the applicant at the moment or Emily? Not yet? Okay. All right. Thank you both. All right. So as I mentioned earlier this evening, you know, the public, the official public hearing was at the, whoops, was at the Planning Commission, but I always give the opportunity for the public to share thoughts and comments regarding any of these different projects. So a bunch of you did sign up out in the entryway. And so I'm just literally going to go down the list. And then when I'm done with the list, I'll just see if there was anybody that did not sign up that wants to speak is welcome to do so. Again, we'll ask that you please limit your comments to two minutes or less. And if there's specific questions that you have, our staff is going to be taking notes. And at the end of listening and commenting, we will provide, we will provide staff the opportunity to give us the answers or try to answer some of the questions that might be out there. So the first one I'll just start with is, I believe it's, and I apologize if I don't recognize some of the writing, but Michael Childs, Jr.?
And instead of me reading addresses, I'll just ask you to just state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Michael Childs, Jr. My address is 16501 235th Street Way, Welch, Minnesota, 55089. I'm a tribal council member of the Prairie Indian Community. I'm the treasurer. And, you know, I read about this project in the newspaper. You know, I guess I have a couple of questions. You know, when I looked at some of the proposal here, you know, you know, I want to make sure, you know, they're, again, Minnesota Statute 307.08, which is, let me, sorry, I'm horrible at, it's basically Cemetery Protection Act. I want to make sure, you know, that my ancestors, that, we have a saying, it's not if you're going to find ancestors, it's when and where you're going to find ancestors. You ask the Met Council, we've had nothing but issues. When you don't think you're going to dig something up, you will, okay? So there again, I want to know, you know, what kind of archaeological findings, because all I found in here was from the shipo, which basically says the majority of archaeological sites in the state and many historic architectural properties have not been recorded. So there again, they haven't been recorded. We find them all the time. I shut down the Hastings wastewater treatment plant because that was a poor design. There again. So you got that state law. You're going to hook up to the, you have to turn in a comprehensive plan to the Met Council, I assume, right? Well, guess what? Under Minnesota Statute 10.65, there's a tribal consultation that the Met Council is going to have to come and talk to us about, because now I've been apprised of this project. You know, there's numerous, you know, archaeological, you know, federal laws and all that. So there again, I want to make sure that these are done. You know, you had Gray Cloud Island, that's Machipia Winyan, which is the cloud, okay. Well, I just wanted to bring that up, so.
Thank you, sir. And we took your comments down, so we'll be able to share those.
And I know my time's up, but there again, you know, trying to annex Gray Cloud Island for that gravel pit, we don't forget that because that was just recently too. So you know to talk to us with this stuff going on.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Lisa Mueller. I'm here with Friends of Gray Cloud. My address is N 5001 810th Street, Ellsworth, Wisconsin. And my watershed address is Spring Creek, Trimbell River, Mississippi River, Gulf of Mexico. I often end my two-minute monologues with a quote, but tonight I will start with one from Andrew Harvey. Follow your heartbreak. That is, scan your conscience for the issue that keeps you awake at night. Then get up in the morning with the intention of doing something to mend that one broken thing. I've stood here at the podium many times before, each time pouring my heart out, offering alternatives to the development scenario being considered. My background and experience is in negotiating conservation land transactions. I offer to work with the landowners, the city, and the parade of developers that have stood here in this room. Other Cottage Grove and Gray Cloud residents have done the same. They have shared their stories, their love for this place, and their rationale why this development is not a good idea. At last month's Planning Commission meeting, 31 people stood here and gave impassioned testimony about conserving the former Mississippi Dunes as public parkland and open space. It was a mix of scientists, students, environmental policymakers, and neighbors of the Dunes. Yet, their comments were ignored when the Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of allowing the Mississippi landing proposal to move forward. This brings us to tonight. Since the Planning Commission meeting, Friends of Gray Cloud has amassed 1,249 signatures on a petition that outlines all of the reasons that this proposed development should not proceed. I will be leaving those signatures with you here tonight. Before I exhaust my two minutes, I want to call your attention to a major oversight in your planning process that will need to be corrected before this development can be approved, and that is the preparation of a new environmental assessment worksheet. If the Mississippi Dunes property is not in the AUAR, a separate environmental review is required for any proposed project that trips the threshold for mandatory EAW and EIS. PULTY's proposal was big enough that it tripped the threshold for a mandatory EAW. However, that project no longer exists. I'd like to finish. Rachel's proposal is different and itself trips the threshold for a mandatory Rachel's proposal is different and itself trips the threshold for a mandatory EAW as set out in Subpart 5 of Minnesota Rule Part 4410-1000 on a change in a proposed project. Our argument would be that Polte's proposal ended when it backed out of its option to purchase, and Rachel's proposal isn't a change, isn't a change to an existing project, or rather, a completely new one, that is big enough on its own to trip the threshold for a mandatory EAW.
Okay.
Lastly, the new EAW on the proposal may use some of the information from the old one, but it can't simply roll over everything that was said in the old one. I think I've made my point. So we're expecting a new environmental assessment worksheet.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I believe, is it, thank you, yes. Is it Nico Amundson?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Nico Amundson, and I live on 8130 East Point Douglas Road in Cottage Grove, and as such, I reside within the Mississippi River watershed. I, like many others, have been here before to speak out against the great injustice that is the Rachel Development Project being built on the former Mississippi Dunes that will encroach upon the untouched lands that are the Gray Cloud Dunes. We are, of course, here again despite knowing what the outcome is going to be, that being the building of 377 homes, because not even 376 would be profitable, as we learned last time. I know that even writing this hours before speaking, that not a single person will show up to speak in support, outside of those on this project themselves and those of you that work for the city. That brings in the other question of how you can work for a city full of people who despise this project, yet you are so willing to let it go through anyway. How can you claim to represent us when this has been shown time and time again that not a single person of this community wants this done? I don't know about any of you, but my view from Grove Ridge Apartments is that of a loud Interstate 61, the huge bright warehouses, and the mass of flying planes going to the Minnesota, or the Minneapolis International Airport. The Gray Cloud Dunes are the only untouched earth that Cottage Grove actually has, and it is being boxed in on all sides to the detriment of the wildlife, plants, and people like myself who depend on it the most. I urge you, if there even is anything left to be done to stop this, for this development to not occur. This piece of land is rare, and without it, I am afraid we will lose another rare piece of earth to selfish destruction. Once this land is leveled and developed, it will never be able to rehabilitate it like it can be now. The consequences of this may not be seen right away, but when they occur, they will be devastating and you will all be culpable.
Thank you. Is Corinne Martz, Martz, I believe?
Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Corinne Mars, and I live at 10647 Gray Cloud Trail South in Cottage Grove, and I am a resident, a taxpayer, and a voter. By trade, I'm a historian and am a member of the 19th century Minnesota researchers. And until last week, when my term limit was imposed on me, I was also a member of the ACHP here in Cottage Grove, which is the Advisory Committee for Historic Preservation. Although I am against any building on the former Mississippi Dunes Golf Site, I am here simply to have us remember that there is another building involved, and this is at the corner of Gray Cloud Trail South and 103rd Street. It is the historic William Cohen Home. This home is now 170 years old, built between 1872, or 1852, rather, and 1853, when Minnesota was still a territory and five years before statehood. In June of 2022, Mayor Bailey attended our ACHP meeting. He wanted us to vote to have the Cohen House demolished, but gave no other particulars. As I had attended the February 2022 council meeting and had learned of the plans, I was able to share the facts with my fellow members. The plan was, and as far as I understand, is still to demolish this historic home and to replace it with a pumping station for all of the human waste that will be generated from all these homes, waste generated day in and day out. The membership considered the mayor's request and then voted with the result of being 8-0, a unanimous no vote against demolition. And yet, here again, since the meeting since September of 2021, when we had our rally here, each time, people and residents have been coming and saying, no, we do not want this. We do not want this desecration of this beautiful property. We have to save this property because it's the right thing to do, and we want to save this parkland and home for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's Amanda Marty?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Amanda Marty. I live at 8196 Homestead Court South in Cottage Grove. When I woke up this morning, I did not expect to be standing here tonight talking to you all. I've been a silent follower of the Friends of Gray Cloud for some time now, but I can be silent no more. Here's why. It's because today, my son, who is in college, told me, he texted me, he said, Mom, you need to go to the city council meeting tonight, and you need to speak up about this. He loves Gray Cloud, he loves fishing with his friends there, he loves boating on the Mississippi, we all do as a family. He loves nature, and I can't let him down. I grew up in rural Minnesota where land isn't dotted with rooftops of houses, rather, it's filled with trees, farmland, and the bodies of water Minnesota is known for. I moved to the Twin Cities because, quite frankly, the job opportunities were greater here. My husband and I first moved to St. Paul Park when we got married. We oftentimes drove through Gray Cloud and were always mesmerized by the tranquility it offered and so close to the city. I was so amazed that such a place, similar to my hometown, offered this kind of beauty so close to a big city. In 2006, we moved to Cottage Grove, and we still took those occasional drives through Gray Cloud, hoping to see some native wildlife. As our kids have grown up, we've brought them there to cherish and love it too. I don't understand why this area is being taken for granted and almost looked at if it's, as if it's just another farmer's field that can be developed. I don't understand where it lost its sacredness and became a business opportunity. At what point do people lose the ability to know what is truly important? I'm asking you tonight to please remember what is truly important. We are so fortunate to have the Mississippi River and this beautiful land in our backyards. I didn't let my son down tonight. I spoke up. I did the right thing. I only hope that you all don't let your children and grandchildren down. Can you tell future generations that you did the right thing? Please leave a better legacy. Thank you.
I believe it's, is it Mary Sumstier?
Marie Sumstier.
Sorry.
That's okay, my writing's not very good.
Well, you must be like me, then.
I'm just here because I'm concerned about the Cohen House being torn down. I have spoken before about how Cottage Grove has a limited number of homes that reflect the way everyday people lived in the past. I know that the model homes for the original Orin Thompson Development, those homes are on the City Register of Historic Places. We're not talking about tearing down my house. There's many houses, there's many Orin Thompson houses around here. We're talking about tearing down a home that existed at the time, there was the Trading Center, the Trading Post on Gray Cloud Island that serviced Fort Snelling. In fact, the man, Phelan, who killed his buddy, he used to come here all the time. That was the first murder in Minnesota, if you remember that book. So this house was here in our very, very early history. I just cannot understand why you have to tear it down. You have changed the roads around here a lot since I've been here, since I've been having picnics in the cemetery under the lilac trees. I have been since before Grants was ever built, before Parade was ever built, Country Club. And I've seen you take a lot of things away, and I understand about development, and a lot of it is needed, but I just cannot understand why you want to take, you can't move the street to save that home. You've realigned many streets since I've lived here and built many new ones, and I just don't understand the reasoning. And I can't believe that there is anyone in Cottage Grove that would be against that. It's just shocking to me. It's just one house.
Can I get you, though, you didn't mention your address, just for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
8729 Avenue South Cottage Grove.
Thank you, thank you. I have a G Lynch?
I actually thought I was signing the attendance.
Oh, so you don't want to speak? No, that's fine. All right, we'll just keep going down there. Stefan Erickson? And I'll just remind again, just address, please, name and address. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Erickson, 8771 Ironwood Ave, Cottage Grove. I'm one of a thousand citizens in this area who oppose this development. I've walked and picked up trash several times this winter around my street. I'm able to fill two to three garbage bags within a few blocks. I found a drone in the trees, scattered car parts, countless bottles of used chewing tobacco. This is what happens near our streets. Needless to say, human waste will make its way to the river, along with the many contaminants involved with developing and maintaining this land. I believe as a people, we are deficient in life. In the 50s, flickering lights gave us the illusion of life, and we began practices like sitting in our households, watching a television in unity. Now screens are ubiquitous, and technology further tries to imitate nature. It chirps at us, responds to us, speaks to us. Built because we crave the interaction that we no longer have with the living, breathing world, it doesn't compare. Being in places like the Mississippi Dunes is restorative to us as humans. A deer in the distance, birds singing overhead, leaves applauding from the canopy, one becomes surrounded by life. If our governments can't defend nature for themselves, can they not hear that over a thousand of us say halt? If we are near the river, let us be a river town. We could celebrate life in Cottage Grove. Many of us have seen undulating hills that inspire awe. The Rusty Patch who lived there are endangered, they were the first bees to be listed as endangered. We owe it to them to at least survey them in a non-winter month. The environment is an extension of our body, an extension of our health. We are in reciprocity with the trees that inhale what we as humans exhale. Will the Cottage Grove officials allow our bodies harm?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rod Hale. Rod?
Rod Hale, 11701 Gray Cloud Trail, Cottage Grove. Mayor and council, good to see you. I had some prepared remarks, but I didn't get your two-minute memo until I got here tonight, so let me just give you a couple of highlights. You know, first of all, 333 homes on 120 acres. We're not going to have a city park, we're going to have a neighborhood park. That's, can you just imagine, it's over 1,000 residents are going to be on that land. The other issue I have, I guess, is simply that you're giving him a PUD, or better than that, you can't confuse the fact that NSA is giving, is going to buy 48 acres. The other 20 acres comes from the County Water and Land Legacy Fund, and half of that comes from the DNR. So developer hasn't paid any of that, and I appreciate the people that worked hard to get that across. But the other issue is that it's a PUD. Now, I know what a PUD is, and I'm sure you do too. That's when the developer comes in and says, hey, I can do a better job of developing my project if you just let me use, escape from some of the rules and regulations you have. And using in exchange for that, we get a greater benefit too. The city says, okay, we'll do that, but you've got to do this. And that's why we got Orin Thompson Swimming Pool and Clubhouse, that's how we got the Ravine Park, that's how we got Thompson Park. Those developers paid more in order to get out of the regulations that they would have to follow otherwise. You know, the other argument I have is that, you know, there's been no discussion. I followed this all the way through, and I've yet to hear anyone on the Planning Commission or anyone on the council tell me why this land is going to be of greater use to the city of Cottage Grove by putting 333 houses on it than allowing us to be able to find funding outside the by-the-whole track and make a regional access river frontage and recreational area for the citizens. Seems to me that's where our efforts should be.
Thank you, Rod, thank you.
That's it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Oh, sorry.
Although my great uncle taught Marvin Schwan how to make ice cream.
Oh.
There was Schwan's ice cream, and there was Schwan's ice cream. Sorry. Bill Schwan, 10300 Gray Cloud Trail, Cottage Grove, Minnesota. I live across the street from the, from the stone house, and the golf course has been my playground for 30-some years before the golf course was developed and then now afterwards. And I'm sorry to see it go. It looks like it's, the decision has been made by the city long before they even invited us to come up and talk. I was at the Planning Commission meetings, and as Rod stated, you know, everybody got their three minutes, and the Planning Commission members just patiently listened, and then they voted, done. We haven't heard boo from anybody as to, what is your rationale? What are you doing with all the comments from the city citizens here that are against this? Who is for it? I mean, we would love to hear what the Planning Commission members were thinking and feeling, what the rationale was for passing it on to you. We would love to hear from you, but you politely sit and listen and ring the bell, and where's the communication? Where's the dialogue? You know, where's the explanation to all these people?
All right, is Brooke Christiansen? Brooke Christiansen?
Sorry, I didn't hear.
No, you're okay. Sometimes it's tougher out there.
All right. Well, I am Brooke, and I reside at 8771 Ironwood Ave South Cottage Grove. Hi, council, thank you for letting us talk today. I do not support the Mississippi Dunes Project, along with all the other people talking today. If you feel comfortable, please, everyone, including all of you, can you close your eyes for a moment? And just imagine, you are in a vast field. In the distance, there's a calm lake. You are surrounded by nature in all directions. Beneath your feet is the soft soil of the earth, not hard gravel. As you walk, you are brushed gently with prairie grass. You hear birds singing in the distance and the wind fluttering through the trees. You had a rough week at work or a misunderstanding with your family. But now, you are still, and you feel a sense of calm. You are reminded that you are a part of something much larger than yourself. You may now open your eyes. That serenity, that joy, is only found in nature. That feeling is sacred, and the Mississippi Dunes can provide each one of us with that feeling if we can work together to protect the beautiful land. That means protecting it from being ripped apart and paved over for housing. Council, please listen to the people of Cottage Grove. We do not support this development, and it feels like you are not listening to us. Be more than what the money, be more than the money that is at stake. Over a- Over a thousand people have signed the petition stating they do not support this development, development project. We do not want this development to happen. This place is special, and we will continue to fight for conservation because this is a source of joy and healing, and if we protect it, it could be for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Madder.
Okay. Been here so long. Okay, hello, Mayor and Council members. Thank you very much for listening to what I have to say. My name is Bonnie Madder. I'm at, live at six six four nine Inskip Ave, South. And I've been with you through this whole process. I've been at every meeting, workshop, planning meeting, parks and rec. I've done it all. So a lot of people have already expressed some of the things that I want to say, so I'm not going to say them again. So I'll just start, like, three paragraphs down. We know that a landowner has the right to dispose of their property as they see fit, as long as it meets the zoning requirements. In this particular case, there were many things that seemed a bit off. The property was purchased by the current landowner in a foreclosure sale. There was a pandemic, and most people were learning how to conduct their jobs from their homes on Zoom. It appeared that there was a rush on the part of the city to move the plan through. In 2021, there was a mysterious fire on the property that burned down the clubhouse. The community outcry was for keeping the location a natural space. Community members had hoped to turn the property into a nature park. Various nature organizations indicated a willingness to help purchase the property, but they required the city's support. But the city never recognized that. Instead, there was a development plan accepted by the city before the zoning had gone through the required regulatory approval process. The environmental assessment worksheet raised more questions and comments, both from the regulatory agencies and the public. Whatever happens moving forward, it is imperative that the Gray Cloud Scientific and Natural Area, SNA, be protected by the City of Cottage Grove, the developer, the builders, and their employees, and the future residents of that development. This is a disgrace. The community and the friends will be watching. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I will hand the information. I have a, let's see, I have a letter with really a lot more additional comments. I will provide it to the city clerk, and I will wait for an answer. And this is for the public record, so anybody want to copy, let me know. I'll send it to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julie Brokaw.
Hello, my name is Julia Brokaw. I live in St. Paul, and I'm here today on behalf of the Xerxes Society for Invertebrate Conservation, an international organization well-known for its scientific efforts to protect invertebrates. I also recently defended my PhD in entomology at the University of Minnesota BeLab, studying pollinator conservation with some of the leading researchers in the nation. And I have more than a decade of experience in pollinator conservation ecology. My comments echo that of Dr. Elaine Evans, a nationally renowned bumblebee biologist who also works at the University of Minnesota BeLab and who submitted her comments via email. Last year, I also co-authored a long law review article with environmental lawyers about the Endangered Species Act and the Rusty Patch Bumblebee. So on behalf of the Xerxes Society, I'm well-qualified to make the following statements. The proposed development is harmful to invertebrates and could threaten the persistence and recovery of the Rusty Patch Bumblebee. Second, the habitat suitability study that they mentioned lacked scientific integrity, and quite frankly, makes a mockery of the regulatory process. It is embarrassing to have a habitat suitability study done in the middle of winter when snow is on the ground, when there are established and specific field methodologies to document and preserve the populations of rare species. Third, this developer and the city needs to ensure that they are adhering to the Endangered Species Act. The Rusty Patch is a federally protected species, and so they're not regulated by Minnesota state agencies. This includes, but is not limited to, acquiring take permits that prevent the take or the harm of the Rusty Patch Bumblebee, which could happen during or after construction, as there may be queens or nests within the area. When you harm or kill a queen bumblebee, you kill an entire generation of bees. Having a tiny portion of this property conserved is not enough for their continued existence. Thank you for considering my comment.
Thank you. Dick Polta? Thank you.
Dick Polta, live ninety-six hundred Geneva Ave, South, St. Paul Park, Minnesota. Actually, live in Gray Cloud. You wonder why I'm here? Well, whatever St. Paul Park does, you do, we do. It all affects one another. That's why I'm here. Okay, okay. Scares me when one of the Planning Commission members asks the developer, do you need that high a number of units to make it profitable? That's what he asked. Developer answered, yes. Well, what else would they say? That same meeting, the attorney, city attorney, said the city must let the developer develop the property as per the zoning. She didn't mention the city is a regulating government unit. The city controls the zoning. The next one is, who's leading this development, the city or the developer? Okay, and this part isn't on here, but the developer did show the lot sizes, but he skimmed over pretty quick. A lot of the houses are ten feet apart, five feet from the property line, okay? And they're not angled. They're like this, all the way down. You got a few of them along Hadley up there right now. If you look between them, it's useless property. It's kind of junky. Okay, so I can't believe the city council wants this high density for individual residential homes. Ten feet between homes leads to nothing but problems down the road. Drainage, working on home, privacy, and so forth. You can't hardly work in your own home without trespassing on a neighbor's property. The ten feet between homes really becomes useless land. As close as the proposed homes are showing, you might as well get rid of the ten feet of useless space between them. If the city really wants this high of a population density for this area, I know they can do better. Townhomes, condos, and so forth. You can probably get the same population with a much better ending project. Population could possibly end up being the same and leave more open, useful space. Other developments in the city have not been done like the proposed development, and so why here?
Thank you. Martin Kirkus?
Hi, my name's Martin Curseius. I live at two five one three Thirty-Fourth Ave, South, in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And I'm here to read an email from Christopher Smith at FieldEcology.com. It's an email that he sent to the DNR about flaws that he recognized in the National Heritage Information System Review Letter. This email is dated January twenty-second, 2024. Christopher Smith writes, "I am writing to express concerns with a recent NHIS review letter that was provided to the Mississippi Landings Development Proposal. This is a highly controversial project, one that has already been involved in one lawsuit." In the first paragraph, in bold, the letter states, "I do not believe the proposed project will negatively affect any known occurrences of rare features." He writes, "I have a few concerns with this statement. Number one, I discourage the use of language like 'believe' in regulatory documents like this. Belief has no place in environmental impact analyses." Secondly, the letter contradicts itself in several places. First, it claims there will be no negative effects, but then includes the following paragraph, which I'm abridging for time here. The paragraph reads, "Several state-listed birds, either endangered or of special concern, have been documented in the vicinity of the proposed project. Given that, disturbance to undisturbed grassland areas and tree or shrub removal must be avoided from April to August fifteenth to avoid disturbing nesting birds. As stated in correspondence with Minnesota DNR Endangered Species Review Coordinator Lisa Joyle in March 2022, vegetation clearing for the proposed project will occur outside of the April to August fifteenth time period. Now, avoidance wouldn't be needed if no negative effects were anticipated." And he closes with, "I respectfully request DNR reissue a NHIS review letter that uses language commensurate with the actual impacts anticipated by development adjacent to the Mississippi River, an SNA, and other DNR-regulated resources."
Okay, thank you. Lenny Clancy? That's the last on my list. Lenny Clancy. Thank you.
I'm Lenny Clancy. I live at eight zero six three Hundred and Thirteenth Street here in Cottage Grove. I understand that previously the Mississippi River Corridor would not allow development of the dunes. That is why it was approved for a golf course. Why are you reversing that decision, or who is? Another new development will require more services, including schools, police, firemen, road maintenance, snow removal, trash pickup, equipment, traffic, and accidents, and crime. Who is going to pay for all this? Us taxpayers. Every one of us is going to be paying for this. What about the, on the lower end of Hundred and Third? I don't understand how you are going to correct that area when it comes to the railroad bridge. It doesn't make sense at all to me, but I don't know. You guys know that more than I do. I remember the first time I drove down Ideal Ave and was in awe, looking at all that open space. Now it's being consumed by buildings. Last fall, there was a groundbreaking ceremony on Hundred and Tenth and Ideal. No one in the neighborhood was invited, yet there were at least thirty cars parked up and down Hundred and Tenth Street by the city people that were there for that ceremony. I don't think you listen to us when we tell you that we don't want this. It's just like it's getting crammed down our throats whether we like it or not. Every time I drive through Gray Cloud, it feels like you are driving through a rural area in northern Minnesota, and it's right here at our fingertips. I was, I always feel lucky when I drive through there to have that privilege to enjoy that ruralness that we won't have ever again, if you're going to take it away from us. We want to vote on it. I think we have the right to vote on whether we want this or not. All of Cottage Grove.
I'm not sure if, is it Sue Walton?
Joe.
Joel Walton? Sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Joel Walton, and I live at nine six seven Striker Ave, West St. Paul, Minnesota. And I worked for Friends of the Mississippi River for four years, from 2011 to 2015. And during that time, I wrote various natural resource management plans for, for the state and for counties and cities. And I helped write one for Gray Cloud Dunes. And when I did that, I realized how incredibly valuable and amazing that place is. And I remembered that I went to the edge and looked out at the golf course and thought to myself, wow, what a great opportunity this would be if we could take this land and restore it to the native condition, and you could buffer that, the beautiful SNA area. You could expand on the habitat and do a lot of... This is like a golden opportunity for you folks to conserve this rare community and these rare species that live here. And I really think you're missing a great opportunity. And I know that there was a negative, the DNR said that there was a negative impact. But there really, it is going to be a negative impact because you have lots and lots of houses. You're going to have potential for fertilizer getting into, more fertilizer getting into the river. You're going to have maybe pesticides and herbicides for people who are living there that could drift over into the SNA. You have the potential for a lot more dogs to be going in there. But I really think, and also in 1987, there was a comment that it was rated high for the Dry Barren's Prairie that used to be there before the golf course. Well, a lot of those seeds are still viable in that soil, and it isn't a total loss. You could restore it without too much, too much work.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And Andrew Martz?
Hello, name is Andrew Marots. I live at two nine two zero Thirty-Seventh Ave, South, Apartment One in Minneapolis, your neighbor up the river. I'm a habitat restoration ecologist and wildlife biologist. I've hosted hundreds of environmental volunteers in habitat restoration at the Gray Cloud Dunes SNA. I spoke on the matter of the dunes development at the January meeting. I concluded my comments then by recommending to the council that approval be put on hold in order to complete more thorough surveys for mussels, bees, and bird life in the development area. Tonight, I echo the comments of Julia Brokaw of Xerxes Society in their warning about the project's violation of the Federal Endangered Species Act and the questionable methods in which the site has been assessed. The process in which this development has moved forward has skipped over critical steps in ensuring that endangered and sensitive species are preserved and protected into the future. Under the Endangered Species Act, the development you are planning will certainly cause incidental or direct take of the Rusty Patch Bumblebee, a federally endangered species. You have not fully complied with federal regulations regarding the protection of habitat for the bee. Additionally, the survey methodology used to determine habitat suitability for the bee are extremely suspect upon mine and my colleagues' review. The findings claim the land to be of unsuitable quality, but I think it's absurd to think that the habitat, as it is now, is all that it could be or has been prior to agricultural influence. The start of this site did not begin in the 1930s, where the city presentation began. Plowing, grading, and golf have degraded the site, but it is not beyond restoration, as the gentleman from FMR said before me. Not even close. The land rests upon a bed of sand that can create one of the most magnificent and unique prairies in the upper Mississippi corridor, given the time and care. As I understand it, the Endangered Species Act allows for civil lawsuits to enforce the law, and I think you should expect that your legal liability and culpability and the snubbing of your responsibilities will be thoroughly explored. If Rachel's profit margins are already thin to the point of an inability to lose even one home from the proposal, they may be in for some financial hair splitting to find a profitable way forward, particularly after legal processes and costly permits for take of a federally listed endangered species. This development will hurt the land. It will hurt the water. Despite ludicrous claims that stormwater is a solved equation for the site, it will hurt animals and plants who reside in your city and up and down the Mississippi River Corridor. It will hurt your human constituents, who are demanding that you put an end to this misguided and destructive process. Please, you have a responsibility to the land. You have a responsibility to protect your plant and animal constituents who cannot be here, and you are subject to a court of public opinion for your jobs, which I assure you will be in jeopardy if you willfully go against the wishes of your city's citizens. Do not approve this plan. Leave a better legacy.
I believe it's Eric Damon? No, Eric?
It would be one of the mayor. Good evening. My name's Eric Deamer. 8440 Harkins Road South in Cottage Grove. Mayor, council members. I rise to speak in opposition to the proposed development. I oppose it because I think it's a bad idea. I think it's a bad idea because, number one, we're trying, the city's... Number one, the main argument I've heard so far is, as a selling point, is it's not as horrible as it could be. The other thing I've heard is that there's a narrative push that this is basically debt land that's been destroyed already. Well, only part of it was used as a plowed field. And when they built the golf course, they preserved a lot of the swales, the trees, the existing vegetation. There's trees in the middle of that property that are older than I am, and I'm old. I oppose it because I think it's risky. Listen, if I'm going to lay down the better part of a million dollars on a house, I'm not going to want to be downhill from what ostensibly was a former superfund site. I know, I'm sure that everybody's done due diligence, but property, people paying that much money are probably going to look at it and say, is it worth the risk? And I think it's also a bad idea because I question the judgment of people who are willing to use the island as the pictures for their website but aren't willing to defend it when the time comes. So Bertrand Russell said, "One has to care about a world one won't live to see." And I think that's something you should consider before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Dirtsu? Dirtsu?
Hello. My name is Brittany Dirtsu. I live in 10417 Gray Cloud Trail, the house where I was born. I'm not here to speak about numbers, but from my heart and for my neighbors. I want to make it known that the people of the area do not feel like that there has been outreach or that we have been heard, neither during the 2021 phase or now, but instead feel that we've been ignored and shamed for wanting more. Firstly, I would like to know what tribal agencies you have spoken with. After hearing our friends speak, I see that has not been done. There are tribal groups currently looking for land to build a meeting space or sweat lodge, one of which is the Bidewa Konton, Doda, Dakota. Dakota County Parks had been approached by them, by another band of Dakota, to build a sweat lodge at Spring Lake Park right across the river. This was denied, although Dakota County did give a permit for a Swedish mobile sauna. Let's not replicate this behavior, please. Should we, as a city, seriously consider building residence instead of residences, instead of preserving the sacred native land by working with the tribal community? We haven't done that. We could build something together to bridge our communities instead of divide them further. This land was an important area for trade along the river and is rich with Dakota history. We know that there are burial grounds, are burial mounds on Gray Cloud Island. This is what we know, and I don't believe anyone will be advised of what we don't know, and we will never find out. I do not want to be another white person standing by while tribal communities continue to be left out of consideration and marginalized. Beyond this, I have lived on this land my entire life. I'm the third generation. I have walked this land countless times, and it has healed me just as many. Outsiders of Cottage Grove comment on the energy of the land. You can feel it. I saw how the golf course leached chemicals into the ponds and streams of the land, which led directly into the river, as you can see by the elevation of the map we were shown. The, I, you can see, the, I could see the dead fish and the murky smells walking along the ponds and along Hayes and P. Morris Park, which, again, why was this not called Princess Gray Cloud Park during all those years? This is easy to forget now that nature has recovered the area. My last point is, as a parent, we were just asked to sign a levy because we're running out of space in our schools. Why are we continuing to build before we have the infrastructure in place? I know that, as a city, you must consider finances in our decision-making process, but I don't believe in doing this in spite of due diligence that should be done. These are questions that I have, that I hope you will take into consideration before continuing to move forward with this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kim Sondergager? Kim's, Kim? Kim Sondergager? I think I, yep, there she is.
Sorry, I have to use this. My name is Kim Sondergager, 2513 34th Avenue South in Minneapolis, and I'm reading on behalf of Meredith Anderson. I'm a professional archaeologist with over 20 years of experience in the field. I've served on three historic preservation commissions in Minnesota and currently work as Senior Cultural Resource Specialist, specializing in environmental regulations and compliance. The proposed development and the associated cultural resource management, or CRM, efforts are deeply concerning for the following reasons. First, upon reviewing available supporting documentation, it's clear to me that no efforts have been made to consult with any of the Minnesota tribal representatives who might consider this area to be of significant cultural interest. It's also evident that the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council, or MYAC, has not been invited to these conversations, a staggering omission for a project that proposes development less than a quarter mile from prehistoric earthworks and indigenous mound complexes. In order to fully comply with the Minnesota Private Cemeteries Act, MYAC and the Office of the State Archaeologists, OSA, should have been consulted much earlier on in the design phase to discuss the burial mounds that surround the project area. At the very least, the Prairie Island Indian community should have also been contacted as part of a good faith effort and out of neighborly respect. Neglecting to reach out to Dakota tribes and the state agencies responsible for managing the mounds, burials, cemeteries, and earthworks, protected by the Cemeteries Act, is in itself a telling indication that any public outreach protocols associated with this project were merely box-checking exercises and nothing more. And because this statement is a little bit long, and I didn't want it to be cut off, the next speaker will continue it. Thank you very much.
Assuming you're Laura? Laura?
My name is Laura Gerda, 2347 McKinley Street, Minneapolis. Second statement. It is unclear to me that SHPO has reviewed and provided comments on Phase 1 Archaeological Survey Report. The EAW clearly indicates that SHPO believes that the area has high potential for containing intact, significant archaeological resources. The Phase 1 report contains contradicting statements. One of the more baffling statements suggested that most of the area is not in close proximity to water sources. Due to the undulating topography, the area is extreme proximity to many vast historical and perennial water sources, and the relatively shallow extent of the soil disturbance that would have resulted from grading of the golf course. This is a textbook example of a place that would be attractive to prehistoric and historic communities. Third statement. The potential impacts that this project may have on prehistoric and historic resources were not assessed or discussed. Adverse events to the cultural resources do not consist of physical impacts. Indirect and cumulative impacts should also be addressed and considered. For example, the temporary impacts of vibration from construction, the cumulative impacts of increased foot and vehicular traffic, and additional erosion and impacts to the view shed were not considered in a serious manner, if at all. I respectfully suggest that the CRM efforts related to this project be submitted to interested tribes, as well as local and state agencies, including MYAC, OSA, SHPO, and the Cottage Grove Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation. The consultation and investigation efforts surrounding the project's impacts and cultural resources cannot continue to be perceived as having been conducted in good faith without a more meaningful and sincere approach. This statement was written by Meredith Anderson, Senior Cultural Resource Specialist, Environmental Regulation and Compliance.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that, that was everybody that had signed up to speak. I know our staff was taking notes, and so what I would like to do is take a five-minute recess. And that way, our staff can kind of put together the notes from the different questions that were being asked, provide them both to the council as well as to the, to the audience here. And then we'll continue the meeting. So we'll take a five-minute recess, please.
All right, we'll go ahead and get back started here. I was made aware that there was one gentleman that got here a little bit late and forgot to sign up, so I will let this gentleman come on up and speak for his two minutes. John Schrader, I believe, or Schroeder? John, are you out there? There he is.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. I was a little late to the balcony. All right, so John Schrader, 8407 Pennav, Bloomington, Minnesota. I have several questions and two statements. So question one, how much of the proposed parkland is actually underwater or part of a designated wetland where no building could happen anyway? Question two, have you considered other sites to develop this project on? Why are you picking this site in particular? Will it allow you to charge more for properties and benefit financially as individuals on city council or other reasons? As someone who grew up on a river, I know waterfront property values can vastly exceed those of non-waterfront properties. Question three, why did the land swap happen? Was it to allow the more expensive homes to be built closer to the river? I thought the city wanted to provide public access to the river. That access would be very limited if this development moves forward. Question four, given the known public opposition to this project, why have you not provided more opportunity for the public to meet with city officials and express further concerns? Statement one, my understanding is there is $6 million in state funding to purchase this land. This money is in addition to the money that DNR had allocated for the 50-acre acquisition. Statement two, last fall I traveled to DC to speak with Senators Smith and Klobuchar and Representatives Dean Phillips and Betty McCollum to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Endangered Species Act. All of them care about the environment. There is a National Biodiversity Strategy, HR 195, that has been proposed federally, and the rusty patch bumblebee is one such species this resolution would cover along with others. As a working professional and private citizen, I support nature, not development for financial gain.
Thank you. Okay, so what I think, our staff in their quick break there, hopefully got a chance to go to the restrooms, but they kind of broke it out into different questions that were asked through the process. So we'll start with our, Emily Schmitz is going to go over the planning piece of it and discuss some of the topics that came up. So Emily?
Yes, Mayor, Council. So I'll start, I'm going to touch on three of the topics. I'll start with the comp plan and just verifying that that comp plan amendment, so after the master plan was reviewed, approved, the city did submit that application for the comp plan amendment to align then with that master plan, and that was done in 2022. Some clarity into the PUD and that planning tool, and I'm going to be just a little bit repetitive from my presentation, but the PUD is a planning tool that allows to kind of look at a development a little bit differently and maybe from a unique perspective. And as it's outlined in the code, this allows for us to perhaps provide some flexibility to allow for more of a unique development, to preserve maybe some natural features. In this instance, an additional amount of open space, things of that nature, so to cluster that with some smaller lots, that is that give and take. Then, of course, the developer installing trails to provide for that pedestrian connectivity throughout the development and things of that nature. But again, I wanted to focus wholeheartedly and directly on that PUD and the ability to create a unique development. And then finally, I wanted to touch on some clarity. So new history, the city hired to complete an historic evaluation on the mentioned Cohen House, which reviewed the details of, most specifically, the status of the structure as it stands today. This evaluation identified a large amount of alterations to the specific structure, which takes away from the integrity, which as a part of our historic code, doesn't help to meet those standards of significance to align with our local historic register. So the city took the initiative, of course, to be entirely certain with this evaluation that the structure was altered to a point that wouldn't necessarily deem it to hold the integrity to be on that local register. So with that, I am going to pass it off to the developer, Rachel Development. After that, we have Amanda from an engineering perspective, and then Zach from a parks perspective, and then we will follow up, last but not least, of course, Cory from a legal perspective to hit on some of the other comments and questions that we jotted down.
Thank you.
So I think the first thing I was going to address is the EAW. So the EAW in itself, it's my understanding that as the RGU, the city basically has the authority to interpret how the EAWs are applied. And in this instance, our project is, as I showed you, is reasonably similar to the project that had been proposed before, and we were just moving forward with what, in essence, was a modified version of that first plan. It doesn't, nearly, it doesn't come even close to exceeding what was proposed as a part of that EAW. And so, but that was our understanding, and that's why an EAW wasn't redone for this particular site, but we did follow all the guidelines of that EAW and follow all of the work that was done. As far as the archaeology work, so again, professional archaeological consultants were hired, they were hired because SHPO asked that they be hired. And so SHPO had been notified because otherwise there wouldn't be a Phase One that was completed. And so the Phase One was completed, that was provided to the RGU to review, and I think that was where the process ended at this point. So we're working on, we are updating the inadvertent discovery plan to be in our name. That has been provided to SHPO, and so when, if there's something that would come out of that, SHPO will let us know.
Thank you. Amanda?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So the item that I was going to address for you all this evening is related to the 103rd Street Bridge. Right now with this development, nothing's being triggered for additional changes for that bridge. The developer is going to do some additional signage, advance warning signage of the stop sign, those sorts of things. But we do have right-of-way in place that would allow for future widening of the road under the bridge, bridge improvements, those sorts of things, which are identified as part of the Southwest Estuarial Study that the county completed. So with that, I'm actually going to pass it to Zach.
Okay, before Zach, I did see the environmentalist for us. Nope, you're good?
Well, whatever, in whatever order.
Yeah, well, it's what, yeah, I just want, I think I skipped over, so I apologize for that. And then we'll go to Zach.
Sounds good. I'm Melissa with Chelag Environmental Services. I work on helping developers kind of work through their permitting requirements for sites, and so I might be kind of going, I'm going to try not to go back and forth here, but the rare species stuff is a little bit complicated, so I'll try to work through the questions as best I can that I heard from the comments. So I'm going to tackle the mussels and the birds first. There was a comment that we should, you know, survey for mussels, survey for birds, and the, I'll just let you know, I evaluate this as, this is my determination from reading the comment letters we've received from the regulatory agencies. If we are not impacting the water quality of the river in a negative way, then we do not need to survey for mussels. And because there's a SWIP plan for the site, there'll be erosion control, there's a stormwater management plan, there will not be negative effects to the water quality of the river, and so we do not need to survey for mussels, per the rules. That's where that stands. As far as the birds go, as long as the tree clearing is restricted to that timeframe outside of what the DNR indicated, then we do not need to survey for the bird species. So by adhering to those, I'll just read it from the DNR letter. You know, the DNR specifically said in an email to me, we do not believe there will be any negative impacts as long as, we do not believe there will be any negative impacts as long as impact avoidance measures detailed in the EAW are filed, which the plan is to follow those. So I know there was some comments with regards to the DNR's language that they used in the NHI's letter, which was, I do not believe the project will negatively affect any known occurrences of rare features. The same, the email that I got from the DNR before the NHI's letter was sent out, that they do not believe there will be any impacts to species. That's just the language we get from them. If they thought there were going to be impacts to protected species from, state-protected species, they would tell us that we need to have, apply for a take permit. I have another email from the DNR with regards to the rare plant survey that was submitted and the native plant community assessment that was submitted, and again, we have an email from the DNR that says a take permit will not be needed. And it's that language that just verifies that no further work needs to be done with regards to the state-protected species that are out there, that are currently in the SNA acquisition property. With respect to the bees, I do understand that there was a habit, this one's a little more complicated. So when the bee was listed, this was one of the first projects to come up as a may-affect zone, as being in the high potential zone for the rusty patch bumblebee. So this is one of the first sites that was actually kind of coordinated with Fish and Wildlife Service with respect to potential impacts to the rusty patch bumblebee. And so the previous developer, Polte, hired RES, previously Applied Ecological Services, they have very qualified ecologists on their staff, to go out and do a habitat assessment survey on this site. There wasn't really a methodology worked up at that time, it was a, the bee had just been listed, so people were kind of working into this process. They did a habitat assessment of the site, it was outside of the growing season, but they were able to see the plants that were growing on the ground. Once they produced that survey, so this, it also is a little more complicated too, because you're not surveying for bees, you're not surveying for nests, you're surveying for suitable habitat, which is a combination of overwintering habitat, nesting habitat, and foraging habitat. And what we know to have suitable habitat on a site is basically a constant and diverse supply of flowers in bloom for the whole life cycle of the bee, and that's generally associated with like native grasslands. And what we found from the RES survey and the follow-up survey from MNR, who did the rare plant survey and the native plant community assessment, was that the site lacked native, the project area, right, not the site, but the project area lacks native plant communities. So although the RES survey was done at maybe not the most opportune time, the follow-up surveys that were done during the growing season by MNR verified that the suitable habitat that RES identified was only in the southeast part of the site, which is out of the project area. MNR's findings were exactly the same, that the only native plant communities on the site, that would be the suitable habitat for the bees, was in the southeast part of the site outside of the project area. So it's not just, you're not looking for bees or nests, you're looking for suitable habitat. And for the, you know, 54% of the site that's actually not being developed, there may be suitable habitat there, we found it in the southeast corner, but there isn't suitable habitat within the project area. So it's a little more, that one's complicated to kind of talk about. And we did coordinate with Fish and Wildlife Service, and they did provide a response via email that there would, they did not find that there would be negative, not likely the adversity effect. So then those get a little bit complicated too, right? So we're not just looking to see if a nest or a bee is impacted, it's, will the project as a whole negatively affect the species? Like, is it a detriment to the species as a whole, and the Fish and Wildlife Service found that to not be the case? And I guess I could read their letter. Suitable habitat for the rusty patch bumblebee is likely limited to areas not frequently disturbed. Negative impacts to the species are unlikely, given the previous land use. I mean, that was their determination regarding the bee. And again, this was one of the very first, you know, coordinations I feel like we, that I did with the Fish and Wildlife Service and that they probably did, because it was a new listing at that time. So I think those were the only environmental questions. I'm not sure. Yeah? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then Zach, do you want to talk about the parks?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to briefly address the comment of difference between neighborhood parks and community parks. And I think it's important to do so because the design intent for each of those park uses is different. So, and I think the best way to do that is just to pull the reference right from, the details right from the comp plan. In the comp plan, it states that a neighborhood park is five to seven acres on average, half-mile service radius, and is geared primarily to serve the neighborhood that it's within. A community park is typically 50 acres in size, service area of one to three miles, which means the park needs to have a multi-functional design to draw people from beyond the neighborhood. So although the park, the parkland itself in this development is 33 acres of municipal property, which is shy of the 50 recommended in the comp plan, it is adjacent to other public space, such as the SNA, which has up to 250 acres. There's lots of open space in the development plan, and then, of course, the river itself is a protected piece of public property, or it's public waterway as well. So, and it's got all those other natural opportunities adjacent to this park, so like Glacial Valley, that's a smaller park adjacent to a wider opportunity for open space, so this is similar to that. So we definitely would classify this as a community park, and we have master planned it as such to make sure we have the many there to draw visitors in from beyond the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. And then Cory?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council and members of the public. I'm the naysayer, I'm the one that always comes in with the hard, heavy hand, and the reason when someone asks, well, how can we support this when so many citizens oppose it? I'm the reason the Planning Commission had to say yes. I'm the reason that I'm going to recommend that you approve it. When a developer comes in with a planning application that meets all of our requirements and all of our laws, you are obligated to uphold your end of the bargain, which is to approve that project.
Because you bent over backwards.
Just as everyone has a right to free speech, the developer has a federal right to due process. When they submit an application, we can't change the law on them. You said that we might be inviting a lawsuit from the federal government for not complying with an environmental law? I can guarantee this, Council, I don't mince words, you will be inviting a lawsuit if you deny this application. This developer submitted an application to you. Their property is zoned correctly, it is guided correctly. He submitted absolutely everything that was asked in our ordinances and in state law, when above and beyond, by inviting his own environmental expert to come in and do an analysis. He has met with all of the governmental agencies that he needed to, and he has complied with every plan that he's been asked to. This application is complete, and I would urge you to recommend it, or I recommend it for approval. The tribal member mentioned that there were two statutes that he felt were being violated. One is, there's a statute that it is obviously a felony to damage human remains, and that is true. The developer has worked with SHPO, with an archaeologist, and as he said, he's going to try to be named as the, get replaced as the party if there's an inadvertent discovery of human remains. That's what he needs to do, and that's what he's going to do. The other statute that the tribal member mentioned was that certain state agencies must consult with the tribal agency. You're not one of the agencies listed in that statute. There are state agencies that, yes, must consult with the tribes. You're not required to do that. You could, the developer could, but in this case, they've met with SHPO, they've met with the archaeologists, that's all they need to do. So as I indicated, you've been through my trainings, you've been through both So as I, as I indicated, you've been through my trainings, you've been through both planning commission training, council training. When you have an application that meets the four corners of all of your books, you have an obligation and a duty to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
Imagine if someone built on your relatives.
One of our taxpayers.
Ma'am? Ma'am? No, don't do it. Okay?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. So what I, what I would like to do, unless council has any questions for the staff at this point, I, based on some of the feedback that I've received, some of the people I've talked with, some of the emails that I've received, I thought it was important to, when else they provide a prepared statement, so you understand what I'm looking at. So I want to start out with a bit of a recap of the history of the Mississippi Dunes Golf Course site over the years. I've been involved with Cottage Grove City Government for over 25 years and in various roles, from commission members, council member, and mayor. I remember before I even became involved in the city commissions, I knew of the city's desire to provide easier and safe access to the Mississippi River. As this city has continued to grow, this desire has not subsided. When the golf course was originally built, the site was tilled and graded almost end to end. We know this by looking at aerial photos of the site over the years. To say that the site is pristine and has native habitat is not accurate. This has also been proven by the site review by the DNR and a hired environmentalist. Anything that is native and in good health is being saved in the area the DNR has requested to purchase. The previous golf course owner attended various meetings with city staff and me, looking to change the use of the property. And I should mention, it's not the current owner of the property, the previous. Some of the desired uses that he brought before the city council included high-density housing, a resort-style hotel, a campground, the Renaissance Festival, and WeFest, just to name a few. And all those are legitimately requests that they were there, and I can share this with you, that city staff and I actually met with WeFest promoters and the Renaissance Festival promoters in person and based on these discussions. We told them, we did not believe this site was suitable for this, these types of venues, and though some may think it would be awesome for these types of uses in Cottage Grove, we did not. Fast forward to the demise and bankruptcy of the golf course. A new owner bought the property as a retirement investment. The first housing developer before Pulte, who came to town, wanted wall-to-wall housing. They had housing right up to the shores of the backwaters of the Mississippi River. They were proposing just the minimum of park space as required by law. We said no, and I said no. It was too dense and did not fit with the desire of the city to provide some access to the river. Then Pulte came in to us with the idea for a senior gated community with limited public access to the river once again. We said no, again to this idea, which caused them to go back to the drawing board to find a better solution to provide public access, preserving more open space, and providing for multiple housing options. We have been consistent with our vision for the land and stood our ground to ensure the public access for all abilities to the river is achieved, and there's a balance between lifecycle housing and open space. We also want to offer these, the opportunity to live near the river. Though a lot of reiteration, through a lot of reiterations, park master planning, land use planning, community surveys, commission reviews, et cetera, we are at where we are today. The city of Cottage Grove works with each developer to keep as much open space as possible. In this proposed development, the city of Cottage Grove is capturing the entire riverfront for park and open space. We had never intended on preserving the entire golf course property for park or open space. We followed the comprehensive plan and looked to create a significant regional park on the island in the future. When the addition, the opportunity to gain additional parkland along the backwaters of the Mississippi River came with this proposed development, we worked with the landowner, Washington County, and the DNR to keep development off the river. Some other notes I should share with you of interest, and you saw some of these, I think, this evening. Of the 200 total acres of the property, over 110 of the acres is being preserved as park, open space, wetlands, and buffers. There will be no housing along the river. All of this land is going to be a park and natural open space connecting to the Gray Cloud Dunes Scientific and Natural Area. The original, the original EAW that was completed had housing proposed up to 499 units. The current proposal is slated for 377 total units, well below the possible density within this zoning. We once again checked in with the DNR on any issues or environmental concerns. We, as a city, received a letter dated 1/16/2024 that states this development will have no negative impact or environmental concerns. That was from the DNR. Based on the environmentalists hired for review of this site, no endangered species will be affected by this development. We are still waiting for the DNR to purchase the 12.4 acres below the tracks and the 31.5, 35.1 acres above the tracks to add to the Dunes, Gray Cloud Dunes SNA. They have the funding provided by Representative Rick Hanson to finalize the purchase. I personally wrote a letter to the DNR asking for immediate purchase of the property they desired before another developer comes in and tries to develop the 35.1 acres above the tracks, which is currently zoned medium density. I received a letter back this past week saying they are working quickly and expecting to close on the two parcels no later than June of this year. This is great news, and these parcels being captured will add 20% more protected lands to the current 238-acre Dunes Scientific Area. Some suggest there is money to purchase the entire property for preservation. This is not accurate. We have worked with our legislators, county, state, and DNR to gather funds for the parcels of property we want to protect. The DNR walked the golf course site and specifically selected the 12.4 acres for preservation. We suggested that they purchase the additional 35.1 acres above the tracks, hence this is where we're at today. We were hard-pressed to find the funding to purchase what we were able to purchase. If there was funding available to purchase, if there was funding, if there was funding available to purchase the entire site, the Friends of Gray Cloud or the Friends of the Mississippi River could have purchased it during any of these gaps in development between Pulte and Rachel, or when it was originally foreclosed on for many years. They did not.
We did not have a willing seller.
That is because the money is not actually there. They wanted the city to buy it and raise our citizens' taxes dramatically. This is not feasible or financially possible. The city currently manages over 2,600 acres of park and open space across the city. We have grown our park systems from 22 parks in 2000 to 38 parks today. We maintain over 1,085 acres of parks, or current parks, up from 600 acres in 2000. We went from 19 miles of trails in 2000 to 96 miles of trails today. As you heard earlier this evening on our consent agenda, we accepted grant money to continue to create native greenways throughout our city. We care about the environment. We will continue to work to gain more park and open spaces where it is practical and financially feasible. Some of the Cottage Grove residents that sent us letters through the Friends of Gray Cloud petition asked us to preserve this land, would not be living in Cottage Grove today if previous city councils had not allowed our city to develop in a smart and orderly fashion, along with creating unique developments with parks and open spaces for everyone to enjoy. We are a growing city, and we will continue to grow. Eventually, there will be a significant regional park on the island. I would personally like to see the Friends of Gray Cloud work with the city to move forward with the master plan of the island to preserve certain parts of the island for park and open space. This master plan document needs to be approved by Washington County and the Metropolitan Council. I am fully supportive of doing this master plan. I hope you will help us get this done. And finally, I know there was in the, in the comments that, or the letters that were sent to us, it talks about creating a legacy. And I thought it was interesting. I wanted to say, I personally, I had been dreaming of the day that I can bring my grandchildren who live here in Cottage Grove to the Mississippi River in Cottage Grove to canoe, fish, and learn more about nature. Our plan for this new park is for an interpretive center, outdoor classrooms, and opportunities to learn about nature along the backwaters of the Mississippi River. I am proud of the proposal before us this evening, and I support this proposal. I do want to thank Rachel Development for your passion, vision, and creativity to work with an environmentally focused and sensitive area with this proposed development. You live by your word to create beautiful neighborhoods connected to nature, as you had previously, previously done with the Eastbrook Development here in Cottage Grove. I have been impressed by your careful. We will finally give the citizens of Cottage Grove the opportunity for river access and connection of the backwaters of the Mississippi River. This proposal will also give citizens the option to live closer to the river and have easy access to the Gray Cloud Dunes Scientific and Nature Area and the river. And that is my statement. So I don't know if any other council members have anything they want to add or comment on. Councilmember Kamada.
I see a lot of mad faces. A lot of people feel like they're not being listened to, and they're frustrated. I can see the frustration. I can see people walking out, which is frustrating, because it's almost 10 o'clock and we're here to hear you. Reciprocity would be appreciated. However, I want to touch on a few things. Somebody had mentioned, why don't we get to vote on this? In the previous year, I believe it was last year, we did a citywide poll, and of the respondents, a majority of our constituents, the people who voted for us to be at this dais, identified housing affordability and accessibility as a, as a key issue. Public polling policy just published a study asking several questions regarding housing. 67% of Washington County residents stated that housing affordability and availability was either a serious or very serious problem. 43% of those said that Minnesota has a housing crisis. Surprisingly, only 25% said that they would be in favor of increased housing development in their area. There's a huge, 67% identified housing as a serious or very serious problem, but only 25% were willing to acknowledge or, or accept development in their area. So where's it gonna go? And why don't we just stop, why don't we just halt housing altogether? I had a chance to brush up on Minnesota, the Minnesota statute that gives our city authority to plan, Section 462 regarding subdivision regulation. And it says, "To protect and promote," this is the authority that it gives us, "to protect and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. To provide for the orderly, economic, and safe development of land, to preserve agricultural lands, to promote the availability of housing affordable to persons and families of all income levels, all income levels, and to facilitate adequate provision for transportation, water, sewer, storm drainage, schools, parks, playgrounds, and other public services and facilities. A municipality may, by ordinance, adopt subdivision regulations establishing those standards." Those are all the purview of, of our organization. All of those things are encompassed in our decision on what we do with this parcel or anybody else's parcel. As a matter of fact, anybody who lives on Gray Cloud Trail right now could be a willing seller to the DNR, to Friends of the Mississippi River. Some of those houses are paid for, you don't even need to sell them, just do a quick claim deed. Costs $50 to file. Form's online, it's free. But we're not here talking about that. We're talking about your neighbor's property, what you want to do to your neighbor's property, you want to circumvent their due process. We are not allowed to do that. We have very specific authority, and if we, and I'm going to ask Cory on this, if we were to say, subvert the, the rights of this property owner, what's to stop us from subverting the rights of any other property owner in this room? What's to say that we don't decide that your land, your land is no longer resellable as a home? It's now dedicated as park, no one can ever use it for any other purpose? That's your legacy, that's your family's generational wealth. There's a lot of things to consider with that. But just as we're going to defend this applicant, I never have actually met the current property owner, I wish you were here, because I'm sure you guys would like to talk to him as well. But I don't have a financial stake in this. My duty is to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the laws of Minnesota, which state that if it, if it fits, it ships. Like, this is it. You know, we're not making any special exceptions. I would say that you guys have been a catalyst to make sure that not only do we do things right, but we check our work twice. And unfortunately, my feelings, which are not actually in favor of development, don't matter here. I can't say that I don't like this, so I'm going to unilaterally decide that I don't want it. We'll get sued, and if we lose, the development goes forward anyway, and not only that, but now we lose, whatever controls we had are gone. So if we don't keep this between the rails, it gets passed anyway, and as a city, we've lost any opportunity to help guide this in a favorable way for the constituents for which we serve. So that's, that's what I wanted to say is, Cory, what happens if we would have, per Section 462, I think, 357, if we were to have stopped this before this meeting, what would happen if we just told this property owner, you know what? We don't like that?
Your Honor, members of the council, and Councilmember Kamada, first of all, I think you were a lawyer in another life, because you actually said that a lot nicer than I did. But the developer has a right when they submit an application to the laws that are in place at the time. And if the council chooses to ignore those laws and doesn't have a factual basis for doing so, it's called arbitrary and capricious. And if the developer sued the city, saying, "I am entitled to my development because I met all of the rules and regulations," a court would likely agree.
And what would happen to the symbiotic planning that we've achieved with this builder, if that should arise?
So if, if a court held that the city council was arbitrary and capricious, they would automatically likely approve the project, and as you indicated, it would be without conditions?
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, you want, Councilmember Thede?
I guess I just wanted to, I just wanted to make, you know, some, few comments that, having sat through this whole process, and, and I thought it was very unfortunate that the golf course went away, because I love sitting out on, by the, the clubhouse, looking out over the, the river and so forth, and, you know, while I didn't, you know, I ended up tearing up the golf course a little bit when I was out there. But, but at any rate, you know, I know a lot of you think that, gosh, we've, we've either failed or we haven't succeeded in, in doing some things, but, but if you look back, like, like Myron was reading through, you know, there's a lot of things from, from when this first started to, to now, that largely, a lot of your activity and, and having, you know, really, and even though you don't believe it, us listening to you, and the city listening, about trying to get more land that's, that's accessible to the river, saving some, you know, some of that land, you know, the, the fact is, is that from at one point, it was, it was probably maybe 10% of the land that, that would not have been developed. You know, it's, it's up to over 50% of that, that parcel, you know, is, is not actually going to be developed in homes. And so that, that's really, and, and again, I know in your minds you don't think that's the case, but, but you, you really were victorious in that, to, to get to this point. Personally, I originally liked, would have liked to see million-dollar homes, you know, or, you know, lots, larger lots and so forth. A marketing study was actually done, and I, you know, talking to people like Tony and Monique and, and other, you know, marketing people and so forth, said that, you know, and even though there's not- though there's not very many trains that go on that railroad track, that, you know, that there's people that wouldn't want to spend a million and a half, $2 million for a home out there. But, and I mean, even mentioning to Rod earlier, I was on the Planning Commission back in the early, you know, 2000s and so forth, and we were rejecting communities' developments that had, you know, had narrowed their lots down to 70, you know, 70 feet. And unfortunately, the market is where it's at, and we're at some of these narrower lots and things like that. And the fact is, is that, you know, you say, why would you want to do that? Well, I don't think I'd like a small lot or 10 feet between the next home, but, you know, people buy them, you know, and it's what sells. But so I guess all I'm saying is that, you know, somebody else could have come in and bought that land and so forth, too, and did what they wanted to, to kind of preserve it and so forth. I think we've done a fair amount in trying to do what we could, you know, to get that access, listening to people, getting the access to the river, and preserving really a fair chunk of that. But so I guess that's all I got.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, because Tony and Dave both did a magnificent job of kind of explaining our role in this process, and you did a very nice job with your statements as well. I started working with Friends of the Mississippi on this project and trying to identify ways in which we could preserve as much of the land as possible back in the COVID days. So it was over Zoom, but there were a lot of Zoom meetings. When I was meeting with them, one of my very consistent pieces of advice was, if you want to preserve this, you need to come up with some money. And for a while, there was conversation about, well, we can, you know, cobble together this amount of money if we work with this team and that team and the other team. But after a while, it became pretty evident that the money wasn't there, just like you said. And as this process has progressed, that piece of advice has been the same. If you want to preserve it, buy it and come up with the money. Now, in the course of those conversations, the property owner was involved. As you mentioned, there was an initial development plan that came before us that we rejected. So the property owner at that time was left wondering, well, what am I going to do with this? Because the property owner bought that piece of land at a discount in a, you know, in a sale after Doc's bankruptcy as a retirement vehicle. That's why he and his wife bought it. And their intent the entire time was to sell it. And I'm confident that they, you know, had the best intent in mind as far as what the proper use of the property was. But the challenge is, of course, that if you're a property owner and you're holding a piece of property and your desire is to at some point sell that property, you have to ask yourself, you know, how am I going to make the best use of the asset? Now, what's interesting is Dave Gustafson and Don Gustafson, who own the property, belonged to the Friends of the Mississippi. I don't know if they still do, but they did for a long time. So they knew all those people. And I'm certain that somebody somewhere had a conversation with the Gustafsons. I know we had several conversations with the Gustafsons. And moving forward in time, as it became clear that there was no money to purchase this property for the preservation that, you know, so many people seem to advocate, is, you know, Dave had to make a different decision. And as Cory eloquently stated earlier, our city attorney, he made the decision to sell for development, and what happens then is there is a legal process that we have to follow. And Polte was the first holder of the option. They decided that wasn't going to work for them. And I'm very grateful that Rachel Development came aboard. They have been really good to work with. They've been very responsive to feedback. You know, this idea that, you know, folks aren't listening to what some people have as opinions is, I think, strongly disputed by the fact that Rachel Development went above and beyond with their environmental studies and their surveys, et cetera. And they have come to us with a plan that's going to enable us to preserve a significant amount of that land in Scientific and Natural Area and park space for generations long after I'm gone to be able to use. And I think that that in and of itself is a pretty damn good legacy. This development meets all of the standards that have been placed in place to catch shady stuff. Legally, there's no question that we should approve this development, no doubt about it. And we are elected to look at things from a very objective and dispassionate point of view in conjunction with the law. That's what we get elected to do. And we protect the taxpayers of the city when we don't act in an arbitrary or capricious manner, because that prevents us from getting sued and losing and having to pay damages and all of those things, because we follow the advice of staff, we follow the advice of our legal counsel, and we definitely measure twice and cut once. And we've measured more than twice here. There have been over 15 public meetings on this piece of property in the last four years, over 15 public meetings. So trust me when I tell you, we've taken in an awful lot of public comment and feedback. At the end of the day, though, none of it matters if it's asking us to subvert the law, because we can't do that. I personally won't do that. And whatever the folks want to step up to the podium and cast dispersions at us, as many did this evening, and you'll notice we sat very quietly and politely, and we took the beating, that's their prerogative. They can choose to do that. But I know that I'm doing the right thing in approving this development. I know that I'm doing the right thing for our city, for its residents, and I know that there were 325 residents who signed that petition. There were over 1,000 signatures, but there were 325 Cottage Grove residents. The rest came from different communities, many from different states. In fact, we had some from different countries, probably people who've never been to Gray Cloud in their life. But for the 325 residents who signed the petition, sorry that you feel that way, but the fact of the matter is, we have to move this development forward if we're going to do our job in conjunction with the law. And so with that, Mayor, I'm going to make the motion that we approve.
Before you do that, and I know there's never any opportunity for rebuttal, and you're going to probably get the cane and drag me out of here, I work for Friends of the Mississippi.
I'm aware, and you don't anymore.
Right.
Yep.
For good reason. But that doesn't have anything to do with this project. What it had to do with was the fact that the Gustafsons let us astray.
Yeah, we've taken public comment.
Ma'am, we've already taken public comment, so.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yep.
Point of order.
Yes.
We've taken public comment. Point of order.
All right, point of order. I've got Monique, Councilmember Garza, that would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you all know, I'm very new to this council, and so I'm only a couple of months in. But in my career and as an advocate of responsible growth in a community, I think it's important. I think this is a very important topic, and we hear you. We hear everything that you all are saying, but growth in your community, it's very important for our communities to continue to grow. With that, it brings affordable housing. With that, it brings growth amongst businesses. There's tax breaks that come with different things as we grow a bit larger. So I think this project will bring a wealth of opportunity to our community, and I think that the developers have really taken the intent of preserving our land so that it is still something that we are proud of. All of these things are being taken into consideration, and I think this is a really good project that we should be pushing through our community. I do believe in it, and I stand behind it as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, again, I'm going to move that we adopt Resolution 2024-029, approving the preliminary plat and plan unit development for a subdivision consisting of 377 single-family lots and 18 outlots to be called Mississippi Landing.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that.
All right, so I have a second by Councilmember Kamada. Any further discussion, council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Same. Same on you.
Ma'am, that's, that's your right to be upset, but.
You should do better. You had enough opportunity to do better.
Ma'am, if you want to speak, you can go outside.
You can change it yourselves. How do you sit that night? I don't know how you sit that night.
Ma'am. All right, so we are now moving to 12, which is council comments request. I will do my normal and start with Councilmember Kamada.
Out of respect for the time of evening that it is, I'm going to cede my time.
All right, sounds good. Councilmember Olson?
Nothing.
Nothing for you? Councilmember Thede? Councilmember Garza?
I'm nothing.
All right, now you're all going to go, why am I going to say something? So.
No, you go ahead.
Three, one, well, two things, but they're kind of related. First of all, I wanted to thank our staff, working for years, literally, on this project, getting to where we're at today, which I think, like we talked about earlier, is a very good project for us. I also want to thank, as I said in my statement, you know, Rachel Development for working with us to make something really nice down there. And I know you will, I've seen Eastbrook, but I'm going to hold you to it. So I want to see, you know, some of the things that we're talking about, and I appreciate all the focus that we're going to have on that park. And I want to thank the council, because this can be very difficult to deal with, these kind of things. But I appreciate your passion and your due diligence of reading everything and going through all the details and listening, so I appreciate that. On a fun note, I'll say, and that is, as a friendly reminder for everybody, tomorrow evening at the Cottage Grove Ice Arena, the first sectional game for Park High School Boys Hockey against Creighton will be played at 7:00 p.m. This is the first time in well over 20-plus years that Park has had a home ice advantage in the sectional playoffs. They've actually done, I don't want to jinx them, but they've had a pretty decent year this year. I will say they beat Creighton once, and Creighton beat us once, so this is going to be an interesting game to move forward on sectionals. So we'd love to fill up the stands tomorrow night, so if you're so inclined, I'd encourage you to swing in, and you can buy tickets online, or you can buy tickets up at the door, okay? And that was it for me. So 13, workshop open to the public, there is none. 14, workshop closed to public, there is none. We're at 15, which is motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede.
Aye, second.
Second by current Councilmember Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.